Okay, thank you, Miss Ambassador. Good morning. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal hearing for October 27th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law and the Executive Order of Governor Baker suspending certain provisions thereof due to the ongoing public health crisis. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the WebEx platform. This meeting is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on screen and you will remain muted until administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Your Hand icon in the application via the WebEx platform. To raise your hand, first click the Participant Information icon. From there, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand-raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. I have a comment today for any attorneys here who are representing clients. I want to make sure that you treat this hearing as you would any public hearing. Please do not send us chat information suggesting anything, suggesting strategy, suggesting anything. This is a public hearing, so I want to make sure that you treat it as such, that there are no sidebar comments to any board members privately or otherwise. Before we get started, let me, and I say this because the last time I sat, that was two weeks ago, there were two attorneys who were sending me private comments, which luckily enough I did not see until later, but it is just not, not the way we do business at the Board of Appeal. Let me first take attendance, Mr. Fortune.
Hey, Madam Chair.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yep, 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 yep.
Mr. Rogirio?
Yeah.
Uh-oh. Echoes, Mr. Kindal?
Yeah.
Mr. Devoe?
Yeah.
Is there a representative from the BPDA?
Good morning, Madam Chair, this is Jeff Hampton from the BPDA.
Thank you. And is there anybody here, is Christian Simonello here from, for G-Cod?
Good morning, Madam Chair, yes, I am here.
Thank you. Is there a representative from the Transportation Department? Okay, now that we know that who's here and who's going to be commenting, please, Mr. Fortune, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going to call the First Order for Extension, calling BOA 658-980-10-MCBRIDE STREET. Name an address for the record. Madam Chair, this is set to expire on November 3rd of 2020.
Thank you.
Name an address for the record, please.
Is Mr. Moran here? Mr. Moran? He's unmuted, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way, Boston, Mass. Madam Chair, members of the Board, we are requesting a second extension to construct a three-family dwelling with three off-street parking spaces on a vacant lot in a 3F 5,000 sub-district in Jamaica Plain. The original request for the extension was due to family illnesses in Ireland where the applicant returned to Ireland to care for his parents. Upon return, the original contractor was no longer interested in the project. A new contractor has been diligently pursuing curb cuts, water and sewer commission, and utility plans, permits, and approvals, but due to the conflict, 19 delays, we are requesting an additional extension of one year.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
For one-year extension?
One year. Sorry, yeah, approval, one-year extension.
Okay. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 799-147-30, 4th Street. Name an address for the record, please. Madam Chair, this is set to expire on November 6th of 2020.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty and Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802, here in Boston. This is an Article 80 Small Project Review. Project located in Hyde Park, it's a 45-unit residential building. As Mr. Secretary mentioned, it does not yet expire. This would be the first extension request for this project.
Mrs. Cizula, just a note, I know COVID has put everybody back, but try and make sure that you're not back here for a second extension. We'd like to see these projects files wrapped up. May I have a motion, please?
Understood.
For a one-year extension. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling BOA, calling next case for extension, calling BOA 859-199-59-BLEAK STREET. Name an address for the record, please. Madam Chair, this is set to expire on September 14th of 2020.
November 14th, okay. Is the applicant here, is Mr. Mueller here?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
Hi, I'm Matt Mueller from Hugh Architecture, office at 181 Bowden Street in Dorchester. So this is a single-family, we first applied for the permit in 2019. We attempted to, we had a few outstanding items, including public works approval, which we first tried to get on June 3rd of this year, but because of COVID, we had a lot of problems contacting the office and getting an appointment to get our sign-offs from Public Works. And we finally got our approval, our sidewalk deposit on September 30th, and we had already expired. Also, we had a sister project.
Hold on, so you're here only to request an extension for 59 Blake Street, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend from one year of termination.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Calling the next case for G-Cod, calling BOA 112-1299-1217 Edgely Place. This is to erect a new three-story residence to a multi-family building consisting of a nine-unit dwelling, townhouse, on an existing vacant parking lot. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, this is in the G-Cod. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty and Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. And with me today is Tim McGovern from the proponent, New Boston Ventures.
Christian, please go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Christian Simonelli, Boston Ground Water Trust. We have the no-harm letter from the applicant, but at this time, request a hold for signature since the plans are before BWSC and are under review for the recharge system.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, hold signature.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next case for building code, calling BOA 111-8810-582-EAST-BROADWAY. This is renovating an existing three-unit building, adding two new units for a total of five units, add a new top story, head house and roof deck, four parking spaces accessible from the back. The violation is the Ninth Edition 7080 CMR, Chapter 10, Chapter 10, Section 10009, roof access above the fourth story, where a stairway is provided to an occupied, to an occupied roof above the fourth story of the building. Access to such occupied roof shall be through a penthouse. Name an address for the, for the record, please.
Doug Stefanov, Architect, 423 West Broadway, Boston. Madam Chair, members of the Board, I come before you with the building code request. I was with, in front of the Board last year with the zoning components of this, where the head house became an issue, and it was requested of me to remove the head house and replace it with a hatch. So this is what I've done.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve building code relief.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, Mr. Stefanov.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings. I'm going to call for deferrals or withdrawals. Would you please give me the address before you speak? So 9:30 only, deferrals or withdrawals.
88R White Street, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA 1080462, 88R White Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Matt Echol from Greggo in Toscano, with a business address at 11 Beacon Street, applicant on 88R White Street. I'm requesting a deferral at this time on the case at the request of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We pay change to the project and will be holding another Butters meeting in the immediate future to share these changes, and we'd like the opportunity to get additional feedback from those Butters.
May I have a motion, please? Hold on, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We'll have a date of January 26, 2021, at 1 o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Mr. Secretary, 16 and 18 Cottage Street.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA 101-9225, 16 Cottage Street. There's a companion case, BOA 101-9227, 18 Cottage Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney John Haskell, with a business address of 11 Beacon Street, seeking a deferral today to continue community process and make some amendments to the plans in our discussions with the community.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We'll also have a date of January 26 at 1 o'clock.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? For 9:30 only.
Mr. Clark, I have, I see a hand raised, well, never mind, he lowered it.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Ambassador. I'm going to call the first case for 9:30. Calling BOA 111-2805-70 to 72 Bennington Street. This is a change of use from a four-family dwelling, beauty salon with accessory tanning through eight dwelling units, beauty salon and accessory tanning, and retail store. There is no work to be formed, the existing building had 10 units since 1981 condo conversion. The violation is Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 8, MFR, retail and beauty salon are all forbidden in a 2F 2,000 sub-district. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Name an address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is Michael Welch, Attorney for 70 to 72 Bennington Street Condominium Association. My address is 339 West Broadway, South Boston, Massachusetts, 02127.
So please tell us why you're before us today?
So the building was converted into condominiums in, in 1981, as stated, and the, there's no record of, of legal use from that period of time, which I think possibly due to the fact that the permit records are very confusing, because these two properties, 70 and 72 Bennington Street, have been referenced separately individually and also in conjunction with 60 to 68 Bennington Street and 70R Bennington Street when they used to be one property. So when the work was done, it's just difficult to tell if, if a permit was, was pulled at some point that stated that, that legal use. But in any case, the condominium plans and master deed were filed at that time. It's been assessed this way, I believe, all the way back, as far as the assessing records show right now. So we, there's no work to be done, we just want to legalize this. And also, the woman who owns the two commercial units on the first floor is in the process of renovating the vacant unit to move her beauty salon into, and then plans to renovate, renovate the other unit that's currently the beauty salon into a, a retail store. So in order to get any of that done, which we think would be good for the neighborhood, we need to have this occupancy issue addressed.
So tell us about the residential units. Tell us about the sizes and the, and the bedroom breakdown.
Sure, I believe in the file, so there you have a copy of the condominium plans. The, on the first floor is the two commercial units, and then on the second and third floors, there are, each have four units, one in the front, on each side, there's one in the front, one in the back. They are all, appear to be one-bedroom units. And again, the layout is the same as it is shown on those condominium plans from, from the 1980s.
Okay. Can you, Miss Ambassador, can you please mute the applicant? Is anybody, is there, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, I'm a little confused, I mean, these aren't drawings by an architect, these are the condo document plans, and I don't know how you go from four to eight units with no work being done. So, and as far as I can tell, the, some of the units are pretty, are relatively undersized. It's a little, it looks like they're mostly, it's really, it's hard to read. Well, to the applicant, how big are the, what's the square footage of these units? Looks like they're under 500 square feet. Or several of them are.
I would have to, I could pull up the, the master deed to get the exact size of the units.
Yeah, I'm looking at the.
Don't have it right in front of me.
Well, it's on the documents, they're just not that legible, but it looks like one is 408, 416, 500, 414. These are small units, Madam Chair.
Okay, are these owner-occupied or are they rented out?
I believe they're primarily rented out. I think there might be one owner-occupant.
But what, I would, just one, how do you go from four to eight units with no work to be done?
Well, you know, they're claiming that.
Well, there have been eight units, sorry.
I'm sorry, the applicant is stating that there have been these eight residential units since the 81 condo conversion. You know, and, and we've hit this before, where these, where there have been condo conversions that have been, you know, continued and are not in keeping with our standards. But I guess that what, in a certain way saves this, is that this is an 81 condo conversion, and the zoning went in place for East Boston in 1993. So perhaps there's no way to solve this one, but it troubles me that these small units are not owner-occupied, and that's where we get into an issue with these investment units being rented to people in the community while somebody else moves into someplace else. And we have, and we continue to hold on to these undersized units. So I don't, I don't know what the solution is for this one, Mr. Ehrlich?
So this is just a question of legalizing the listing units?
Essentially, essentially.
Yeah, well, if this were our new proposal, I don't think we would be so crazy about it.
I know, that's why these, these, you know, earlier condo conversions always cause us a problem. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Ed Devoe, if I could just ask a question? Regarding the, the commercial spaces, if I have the right property in mind, I believe one of these was a former social club or a veterans organization, and I'm just curious about that. If you look at the facade of the building, there are no windows, things of that nature, so I would just feel comfortable if the attorney could kind of walk me through that to the best of his ability?
Yes, I'm just looking at the street view now, because again, property used to be combined with the, the property next door, 60 to 68 Bennington Street. The, when I was looking through the permit records, it was a little bit unclear if that social club was in, in that building or in, in this unit. It hasn't been, that, a social club hasn't been there, to my knowledge, for a number of years. So, I'm not sure, but I'm just pulling up the street view so I can make sure we're looking at the same property.
In the meantime, let me find out if there's anybody here to speak in support of this proposal.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office did hold in a Butters meeting back in August for this proposal. As stated, there is no new impacts to this community, and also, the proposal does have support from East Boston Main Streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sharif, can I ask you a question? Are, are you aware of the sizes of these units and, and what kind of use they've been put to?
The sizes of the commercial, commercial units?
No, no, the residential units, they're small.
We would agree, and again, our support is based on there is no work to be done in this building. It is legalizing something that's been in existence for a couple of decades, so it's, it's kind of hard to oppose, oppose it in our minds, but yes, this is not necessarily support about the size of the units.
Okay, thank you.
And just.
Go ahead.
We, I was just going to say that we did submit letters of support from 33.
Hold on, is anybody, is anybody else online to speak, either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, the Secretary here, we have no letters of support, but we have one letter of opposition, and the opposition is another, another salon, parking, and obviously congestion in the area.
Okay. Okay, is there a response to Mr. Devoe? I have a raised hand. Okay. Let's get the raised hand, please.
Hear me?
You're muted.
Okay, you hear me?
Yes, put your name and address on the record and tell us if you're in support or opposition.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I'm Gladys Oliveros from East Boston Main Streets, and I'm here to support this project. I think that it's taken so long and it's, they are stuck, now it's time to move on, and yeah, I support this project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, last, Ms. Ambassador, can you mute everybody? Mr. Walsh, can you tell us about that social club? Is it part of this property or not?
Yeah, I'm looking at the front, so if it's, it says 70, the bunker east, I'm not sure if that's what we're referring to or not, but it's not currently a social club, and it's not going to be used as one, as, as I mentioned, the owner of that, the commercial unit, which is currently the, the beauty salon, will be moving into that unit, which is currently being renovated under a short form, form permit, and then she will be seeking to renovate and put attendants in as a retail store in the other unit.
So let me ask you, are there any grates of that beauty salon or anything at the
On the front windows? I, I don't believe that that's part of it. You mean like the, the bars that are shown on the front door?
Yep, bars, grates.
No, I don't.
Like that.
I mean, Madam Chair.
No, no, I don't believe so.
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, just a, a question for, for the Board, is there anything we can do to encourage some cleaning up of that? Because the front of the building, from, from my recollection, and maybe Mr. Devoe could help me, is, is not the, the standard for commercial space that we would have right now.
Okay, let's get design review on it, so that.
Madam Chair, that, that's pretty much the crux of it. It's, it's certainly not aesthetically pleasing, it is a business district, there are no windows that I, I can recall off the top of my head, if there are, they're very limited, stock space, things of that nature.
So let's get, yeah, let's get design review for the commercial space, both for the front edge and the signage, okay? May I have that motion?
Can I have a motion to, I'll have a motion to approve with BPDA design review for the front edge and signage.
I will second that, Ed Devoe.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 109-0436, 310 Bunker Hill Street. This is to install a rear deck at the second floor. The violation is Article 62, Section 8, side yard isn't sufficient, Article 62, Section 8, rail yard isn't sufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Ralph Gatnick, owner, developer of 310 Bunker Hill Street, Charleston.
So tell us what you're proposing to do?
We're proposing to build a rear deck off the second floor. That would be basically mimicking what's on basically every other building on that side of the street, you know, 510 buildings down and up in the other direction as well.
So how many, how many units are in this building?
It's a three-unit building. The top floor has private outdoor space on the roof. The ground floor has a private patio at grade, and in order to provide additional outdoor space to the second floor unit, we are proposing to build a deck off the back of the second floor with direct access from the unit onto the deck.
So one of your violations, a side yard, it, what is the requirement?
The side yard requirement is two and a half, and a portion of this because of the, so the building share a party wall right where that notch is, when you're looking right where that notch is, when you're looking at that plan, you see where the door is that comes out onto the deck.
Yep.
The two buildings share a party wall all the way down to that point. And what we're proposing is to extend that, um, that kind of shared property line to provide the access onto the deck.
Okay. Okay. Okay, hold on, hold on, Mr. Gatnick, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, to the applicant, is there any, uh, work being planned for the roof deck?
Uh, the roof deck is existing, uh, was re-decked. It's been completed already, was part of the ALT application.
So the work has been done, because there's a headhouse there.
Yeah, all that existing, yep.
That was existing, okay. The, as far as the, um, the rear deck, the proposed rear deck, um, it's fine. Um, the, yeah, the existing headhouse is what it is.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Quinn and Locke, with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. And a butters meeting was held and there's no issues at this time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, secretary here, we have no letters of support nor letters of opposition.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of raised hands.
Okay, let's hear from them.
Uh, actually, they lowered their hands, sorry.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. I don't think it needs BPDA design review.
No, it doesn't.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1097322, 391 to 395 Hanover Street. This is a change of use from three apartments in store to three apartments in restaurant use of 37. The violation is Article 54, Section 12, Restaurant Use is Conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, this is Attorney, uh, William Farullo, McDermott Cote Miller at 28 State Street, appearing on behalf of, uh, Joseph Gian Gregorio and his brother Fernando Gian Gregorio, the owners of this property. The brothers operated the Greencross Pharmacy in this location for more than fifteen years. They now are asking for a change of use from the pharmacy use to a restaurant, which will be, um, owned and operated by their daughter and her husband, Mira Gian Gregorio. The, uh, use is conditional in this district, since this is part of the Cannabis Street Community, uh, Commercial Subdistrict. It will be new construction. It will be handicapped accessible. The total number of seating is planned at 42 seats. That's all on the ground floor. The basement is used for a kitchen use. As indicated, the, uh, requirements of conditional use will be met since this is an appropriate location for a restaurant. This is one of the active blocks of Cannabis Street that has a number of other restaurants. It will not adversely affect this, uh, area of the lot then, uh, and will not create any, uh, obstruction or hazard to either pedestrians or vehicular traffic. Needless to say, this will be new construction and therefore, uh, no nuisance will be required and it'll be appropriate for some of the use of the restaurant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farullo. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Um, the drawings are okay, uh, the, uh, the re-signage and, uh, things. Um, the, I noticed it's a BPDA recommendation.
Yeah, this early, this, this is Jeff Hanton at the BPDA. Um, obviously, that's for the wrong appeal. Uh, we're, we're in support of a restaurant at this location. Uh, as you'll see, uh, and it's my fault for not catching it and I apologize. Uh, I think the next airing on the 10th, there are a lot of, uh, properties at the north end that will be converting from, uh, apartments to executive suites. Um, and that's where this proposal, uh, provides okay from. So I apologize that it's there for this case.
Okay, no, so, so these residential units are not being intended to use for residential suites?
Not to my knowledge, because they'd have to do a change of occupancy for that.
Okay, okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this restaurant?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Armando from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we'd like to go on record to support this project.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have one letter of support, no letters of oppositions.
I have three raised hands.
Thank you, can we hear from them, please?
Mary, you're on muted.
Hi, my name is Mira Gian Gregorio. Good morning to all. I'm going to be the future owner of this new restaurant and-
Thank you, thank you. Can you, um, we generally know that Mr. Farullo does a great job representing applicants. So can we hear from an abutterer, please?
Caller, you're on muted. Caller?
I, I, please, I am in support of the-
Thank you. The next person, please?
What's that?
Ms. Ambassador, the next person?
Yeah, sorry. Caller, you're on muted. Hello?
I don't need you.
Caller, you're on muted.
Okay, um, let's just go, uh, it's, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Support.
I am, I am Joseph Gian Gregorio.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, uh, BPDA, uh, design review for signage.
Second, Ed Devoe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Caller, the next case, calling BOA 1043139, 80 to 84 Warrington Street. This is install foundation, barrier walls, and fences to facilitate the installation of two substation transformers. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, and this is under the G card. Article 38, Section 18, the use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board. This is Joshua Lee Smith. I'm just trying to get my video going here. There, uh, can folks see me?
Yeah, just go ahead, please, tell us what's being proposed.
Ye- yes, uh, just again, for the record, my name is Joshua Lee Smith. I'm outside counsel for Eversource. Uh, very briefly, uh, this project involves, and right there, that slide right there, you may want to, uh, stop on the visuals. Uh, this involves the, uh, development of an existing substation, which is currently located within, uh, an existing, uh, building, located at 8084 Warrington Street. Uh, this property has historically been used since, going back all the way to the 1920s, uh, as a substation. Eversource is looking to, uh, expand where you see that parking lot area, uh, which is, uh, currently used as a service parking lot and has also historically been used, uh, to house transformers outside. Uh, the company is looking to expand this area by, uh, virtue of a construction of, you can see the two renderings, uh, below the photo, by construction of a series of secure walls and gates, uh, to provide, to enclose and secure, uh, an expansion of the substation, uh, yard. The initial phase of the construction and installation will include the installation of two transformers. But it will also, the construction will also allow for the accommodation of a third transformer to be installed. Uh, as you can see, this is really a vast improvement with respect to the, uh, curb appeal, the aesthetic appeal, uh, of the site, uh, as compared to what has been a chain link fence with, you may not be able to see it there, but it's a chain link fence with barbed wire, uh, top.
Sadly enough, sadly enough, we're familiar with the, the, is, is anybody here from N-Star?
Yes, I have, uh, some of, uh, the project team members with me today.
I want the most, the most senior person on, please?
John Zico.
Uh, who's the most senior person on from N-Star on this, uh, call?
Nicole, do you want to?
Good, good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Nicole Bowden, I'm Community Relations Rep for the City of Boston. Um, the most senior person on the call with me today would be John Zico. Um, I believe he's muted.
Okay, um, the reason I ask, I ask, um, N-Star is that, you know, it's, um, been brought to my attention, um, that there are a number of properties across the city that N-Star has, uh, um, maintained in very poor condition. I'm specifically looking at something on my phone in, on Harrison Ave and Roxbury, where, um, there is the equivalent of a chain link fence, there's no screening and buffering. Um, there were slats that were, uh, flapping in the wind, um, and, um, got, which got removed thankfully, but it's in very poor condition. So I'd like to know, what is this, what is N-Star's strategy across all your properties? Because there is one also in West Roxbury that has adequate screening and buffering. Um, and at least that, that provides, uh, some kind of respectful presentation, um, to the community. But what, what is N-Star's strategy across the city? And I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Nicole, I just need to find the most senior person on, on the call to have a response from them.
Hi, Joan, are you there?
I, I am here, can people hear me?
We can hear you, John, John Zico, right?
Yes, and the spelling for that, for the record, is Z-I-C-K-O. And I am the Director of Capital Projects Engineering for, um, Eversource. And, and in that role, uh, my, most of my involvement is when the projects, uh, get engineered and, and come before boards such as this. However, uh, you know, I, I do thank you for your comments, Madam Chair, on the, uh, on the appearance of that, that facility. We have these facilities in, in many locations and, and can't be everywhere at once. And we do rely heavily on, uh, the presence of the people who are in the community to bring things like this to our attention. In general, the company tries to, uh, be a good neighbor in the communities where we operate. We are not always successful, as you pointed out in this case. Uh, but we do, uh, you know, we did several years ago, I, I'm vaguely familiar with the property on Harrison Ave. I've, I've been around, uh, what was Boston Edison and then N-Star, uh, probably for close to 40 years. And I remember when we went around and put those slats in and everything has a, a finite life. With, with regard to that particular case, I will go back to the people who are in charge of operating the station and, and get them to, uh, address the issue down there. I would also continue to work with, uh, Ms. Bowden, because this is actually a joint, uh, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to shrug or shed responsibility, but this is a joint effort between this and Community Relations. They're kind of our eyes and ears in the, in the community. Uh, so I would continue to enlist Ms. Bowden's help, uh, with, with addressing this and other properties.
Yes, because for me, it's, it's a matter of, um, of respect, community respect. When I see, uh, first of all, a chain link fence, I see barbed wires above it. And, and right across the street, there is residential use. And nobody should be looking at their front door and looking at a poorly maintained piece of property like that. Besides chain link fence, I think there's a way of you, uh, providing something that's more aesthetically pleasing, um, with adequate screening and buffering. Uh, we know that there is something like that there in, uh, by Roach Brothers in West Roxbury that, that is, needs some work, but is far more respectful than the project on Harrison Ave and Roxbury. So, um, I will put that on the record and, um, we will, let's proceed. Are there any, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, you want to get questions? You want to get Christian Simonelli on the record first?
Oh, I'm sorry, Christian, yes, please, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both the no harm and BWSC approval letters for this project.
Thank you.
As do we, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Service. Uh, we would like to go on record in support of this proposal. We've been working, uh, for the past several months with Eversource, uh, on community meetings with the Bay Village Neighborhood Association, uh, butters, uh, to resolve concerns around construction management, uh, the screening and buffering issue, uh, that you had raised as well, uh, and also, uh, potential noise concerns, and we feel that. Eversource, to this point, has shown a good faith effort to work with neighbors on this. We do want to stress that our support is conditional on their, their continued, uh, work with their directive butter, which is the Charles Playhouse Broadway in Boston, uh, to, to an agreement related to construction management and, uh, project management for the site. We know that it's going to take a number of years, uh, to construct it all the way. And we want to make sure that construction, uh, minimizes impact, uh, to this directive butter. We will also follow up with Eversource, uh, related to concerns about, uh, their site app, Harrison Ave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have one letter of support, no letters of opposition.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador?
I have one raised hand.
Thank you.
Good morning, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Brian Dubdell from Gulson and Stores, 400 Atlantic Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the Charles Playhouse, immediate, uh, butter for the project. I'll be brief. My clients expressed some legitimate concerns about the project moving forward, but over the last few days, Eversource representatives, including Mr. Lee Smith, have been very helpful in trying to provide that information. Um, as, although we reserve all rights with respect to any permit that might be issued, to the extent, uh, this were to move forward, we share their interest in trying to move it forward as expeditiously as possible. But we would ask, um, as Mr. Sharif just mentioned, that we, there'd be a condition that requires the parties to enter into a reasonable, mutually, uh, agreeable butters agreement with respective issues like construction stipulation and construction management. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Uh, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
We'll make a motion to approve BPDA design review and request that the, uh, that the applicant, uh, continue discussions with the, uh, the butter.
I'll say that, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And this is just a, a note to Mr. Zico and Ms. Bowden that, um, you know, I walk around the corner from this project and I anticipate that there will be some attention paid, um, to this project and to that, um, parcel on Harrison Ave, um, ASAP.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, the next case, calling BOA 1101695, 50 Gloucester Street. This is to relocate the hot water and mop sink to accommodate the change of occupancy, to increase the occupancy from 60 to 87. Increase occupancy for outdoor seating from 22 to 38. And work on a new toilet installation. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, Reconstruction Extension of a Nonconforming Building. Name and address, for the record, please.
Is the applicant here for Select Oyster? Michael?
Hey, how are you? Uh, Michael Circle, representing Select Oyster Bar, uh, 50 Gloucester Street in Back Bay.
So it looks like the bottom line is that you're intending to increase your internal occupancy from 60 to 87 and your outdoor seating from 22 to 38, is that right?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
So is this, is this sp- space handicapped accessible?
Yep, the space is handicapped- Yep, the space is handicapped accessible and has been, um, since, uh, twenty fifteen, when we did the original build out. We essentially did not expand the footprint of the space. We, uh, redid, um, space inside to add an additional restroom to allow for, uh...
Okay. Uh, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lauren Brody from the Office of City Council, Kenzie Bach. And the council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have no letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Thank you.
I, I have two raised hands. Thank you. Conrad, you're on mute.
Uh, my name is Conrad Armstrong. I'm representing Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. The applicant, uh, with us, and we have no oppo, no opposition to this applicant.
Thank you.
Madam, you're on mute.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My operates with the carpenters union. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve and, uh, note that it's, uh, nice to see a restaurant expanding its seating and it's a sign of optimism.
Second, I think.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 1116914472, West Broadway. Need to combine parcels eighteen ninety-three, eighteen eighty-three, and demolish the existing building and erect a new five-story mixed-use building with one commercial, sixteen residential units with eleven-car garage, side-in roof decks, and, and conforming to the compact living policy. Violation, Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking, designed maneuvering area. Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking, insufficient parking. Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-four point one, conformity with an existing building alignment. Article sixty-eight, Section seven, the commercial use is forbidden. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient lot size. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, excessive FAR. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the max allowed height, building height has been exceeded. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient usable open space per unit. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient sideyard setback. And Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient gridup setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined today by the project architect, Timothy Johnson. Our clients are, uh, Charles McCarthy and Patrick McDevitt. Uh, Madam Chair, members, this is an Article eighty small project, uh, which was approved by the B R A Board of Directors on October fifteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, this is also a project coming forward under the Compact Living Pilot. The proposal is for the demolition of an existing mixed-use building, uh, at, uh, four seventy-two West Broadway, three-story building with commercial on the ground floor and residential above, uh, and, uh, its replacement with, uh, a new, uh, five-story building, uh, containing sixteen dwelling units and ground floor commercial space. The units would be served by eleven parking spaces that would be accessed from Athens Street. This is a block true lot. It runs from West Broadway to Athens Street. And the size of the parcel is four thousand eight hundred four square feet. The, uh, composition of the building would be, as I say, ground floor, commercial space, uh, residential, and, and that space would, um, uh, occupy the, the front of the, uh, of the ground floor of the building with, uh, parking, bike storage, uh, elevator, and, uh, vertical, um, circulation, uh, to the rear of it. And then the sixteen dwelling units would be thirteen two-bedroom units, two one-bedroom units in one studio. As I mentioned, this is a compact living policy program, but the size of the units actually come in at the, uh, at the maximum end of the Compact Living Pilot program. The two bedrooms range in size from eight hundred sixteen to eight hundred forty-seven square feet. The two one-bedrooms are five hundred eighty-eight and six hundred seventeen square feet. Uh, and the studio would be four hundred thirty square feet. Uh, with that, we can have Tim Johnson run through plans and just give the board, uh, basic overview of, uh, of the building, its massing. Uh, and I do point out that, um, it does, uh, fit in with the majority of our, all of the recently approved, uh, projects on this stretch of West Broadway, including four eighty West Broadway, uh, which is one building separated, one building over separated by the Santander Bank, uh, as well as the, uh, the new building going over in across the street where the dollar store was, four ten West Broadway, et cetera. Uh, with that, Tim, I don't know if you wanna go through, uh, the plans quickly for the board.
Mr. Marancy, can you tell us what the zoning district is?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, it's M F R L S. So multi-family residential local service, uh, which is curious because it's West Broadway and yet for some reason, uh, the maximum height here is thirty-five feet, whereas, um, in the rest of South Boston, it's forty feet and the maximum FAR is one point five, whereas the rest of South Boston, the FAR is two point zero. Uh, as I say, it's a little bit unusual in that West Broadway is for the most part, uh, you know, the, uh, the highest and densest, um, you know, major roadway in South Boston. The FAR here, uh, for this building, um, would be exceeding that. The FAR here, uh, as, as proposed is about four point zero.
And it's four point zero and it's one point five is what's, um, what the zoning, uh, states?
Yes, one point five is, is, is the maximum under Article sixty-eight for an M F R L S. Maximum building height, as I say, is, uh, thirty-five feet. This building, consistent with other recently approved projects, uh, on West Broadway, comes in at just over fifty-eight feet.
And tell us how the parking is proposed to work?
Uh, parking is, uh, comes in, uh, to the, the rear, uh, of the building. Um, the, uh, there would be a mechanical lift system, uh, which would allow for, uh, eleven parking spaces, uh, in, uh, a three-tier, uh, four-rotation, uh, lift system, uh, where there would be, uh, always one empty, uh, slot. Yeah, eight oh eight, which would be a twelve-car, uh, a twelve-slot system.
Okay, and, um, is there a roof deck proposed on this one?
Yes, there is. Uh, uh, there is a roof deck. And, uh, this is because of the height of the building and because it is a common roof deck, uh, there has to be elevator access, so there is in fact a penthouse on the roof. There's no way around that because of accessibility requirements. Uh, and the roof deck is going to be on the front side of the building. When we had a community meeting, there was concern about having a roof deck in the rear. So that roof, uh, any roof deck in the rear will be, uh, eliminated. It's simply gonna be a front roof deck and it will be separated. There'll be a sound barrier in the sense that, uh, the elevator, uh, penthouse, uh, will separate it from the rear of the building and the Athens Street side of the building, which is, uh, uh, going more into the residential community.
And tell us about, so these micro-units are, um, required to have commons, internal common space? Where is that being provided?
Yes, so, uh, Kim, I don't know if you wanna, uh, indicate the, uh, the plan pages and you can describe that?
Yes, if you go to, um, A O four, please. Uh, uh, A O four is the fourth, um, I'm sorry, A O five.
Yeah, A O five.
A O five, my apologies. Uh, that is the fourth-floor plan. And we show a shared space about the center of the building next to the elevator. Uh, it's about six hundred square feet. It'll have an accessible toilet and kitchenette. Uh, we have large windows, uh, looking out, uh, from that space. This is the interior shared space, which is required by the, uh, C L P program. And then if we go up, uh, to the roof plan, A O seven.
Yes, we've seen.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
We've, we've seen that. Okay, um, I think I'm done with my questions. Uh, Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Um, well, as Mr. Johnson says, it does, uh, meet the requirements of the compact living with the shared, uh, internal space and external space. And the head houses are required, uh, because of the elevator and stairs in there toward the rear. So, um, I would say they're okay.
And there is bike storage. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. There were multiple meetings with the neighbors of this proposal. The team has worked on different interactions of, um, of the project based on feedback they received from the neighbors. We understand there are quality of live issues that remain related to the deck and pickup drop-off concerns on Athens Street. We ask that the team continue to engage the neighbors during this process and throughout the construction phase. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have no letters of opposition, no letters of support.
Thank you. Jeff, do you wanna go?
Hand raised.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My operates with the carpenters union. We wanna go on record in support of this project.
Uh, Jeff, did you wanna go on the record about the Article eighty process?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of board. Thank you. Jeff Hampton, BPDA. Uh, as Mr. Marancy had stated, this did receive BPDA approval in October and we'd like to go on record in support with, uh, design review.
Jeff, just one last question. When does the micro, microunit, uh, I know there was a, a two-year pilot window? Is, is that scheduled to end or has it been memorialized?
Uh, I wish I knew you were gonna ask that question. I would have my crypt sheets with me. Uh, I'll find out this morning.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BT, BPDA design review.
Second, Ed Devoe.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one zero nine nine one two one, one twenty to one twenty-six Emerson Street. This is the renovation of a commercial space on the ground floor and erect a four-story vertical addition consisting of eight condo units. The change of occupancy to source and aid residential dwelling units. Violation to Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking loading. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the building height is excessive in feet. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the sideyard is insufficient. And Article sixty-eight, Section eight, rear yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-eight, Section eight, additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members...
Uh, hold on. Is, is this combined with the Amosus Street projects?
No, these are, these are separate projects, Madam Chair.
Separate. Okay, cool. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is an application to demolish an existing single-story, uh, commercial building at one twenty Emerson Street, which is, uh, at the intersection essentially of Emerson Street, I Street, and East Broadway in South Boston, uh, also located in, uh, an M F R L S, multi-family residential local service zoning district. Uh, the plans that the board, uh, has that are shown on screen, uh, have, uh, been modified since the original application. The top floor, fifth floor of the building has been removed, uh, and the unit count has gone down from eight to six. This does not reduce in the elimination of, uh, any of the violations. As mentioned on the previous hearing, the maximum FAR here is one point five and the maximum height is two point zero. Uh, the, uh, building, as I say, would contain six dwelling units, all two-bedroom units ra, uh, uh, ranging from, uh, one unit is seven hundred seventy-seven square feet. Uh, the remainder are all over eight hundred square feet, um, eight hundred seven, eight hundred fif, forty-four, eight hundred fifty-six, two units, and eight hundred sixty-seven. Uh, each of the units has a rear deck or a rear porch. It's four feet deep by eighteen feet wide. And then there are two private roof decks for the use of, uh, units five and six exclusively. Uh, those roof decks are sixteen feet by sixteen feet. They're centrally located, uh, on the roof and they are accessed in each case by a roof hatch. Uh, the FAR of the project comes in at three point four three. The height of the building is fifty-three feet six inches. I mentioned that the top floor was removed. Uh, this would bring it, uh, just about directly in line in terms of height with the adjacent building on the right, which is in the corner of I and Broadway, which has been there for, I don't know, a hundred fifty years or so. So we took that as the cue when there were concerns raised about the height. And when I say "we," I'm referring to my client, who's also on this call, and his name is Mark Little.
Okay, so, um, it's, so do you have, so the, the ground slop commercial use, um, it's, okay, still open? There's a roof deck. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have no letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Thank you. Anna, are you gonna be speaking?
I, yes, Madam Chair. I'm going to speak in opposition.
Okay, please put your name and address on the record.
I'm, I'm, sorry. Madam, I'm the chair, members of the board, Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition. We understand the team has worked with the neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, coming down from five floors to four and from eight units to six. But neighbors have really concerns about the density and parking issues and would like to move on with the residence. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, are there any more raised hands?
There's one raised hands, but I feel like he just didn't move it. Madam, do you have something to add? No raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling a next two cases, calling BOA one zero six six nine one one, eight to ten Mercer Street. There's a beginning case, BOA one zero six six nine one seven twelve Mercer Street. This is for eight to ten. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to six units, multi-family dwelling, constructed rear addition, add two private roof decks, add six parking spaces, total in the rear for the use by eight to ten Mercer Street. With access provided to a new residential driveway to be shared with twelve Mercer Street, combine ten Mercer Street lot of two thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet with an existing semi-attached two-family dwelling thereon, with eight Mercer Street, a lot of two thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet or the existing semi-attached two-family dwelling thereon, to form a new lot of four thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, a combined lot, a shared driveway. The violation is Article sixty-eight, Section twenty-nine, roof structure restrictions. Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking loading. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-eight, Section nine, Section eight, the building height is excessive in feet. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, additional lot area is insufficient. This is for twelve Mercer. This is the proposed two off-street parking in the rear yard and a shared driveway for, with access to eight to ten Mercer Street. The violation is Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking and loading. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Uh, my client on this project is Mark Little, who is online with us. Uh, Madam Chair, members, this is an application, uh, to, um, modify the building at eight dash ten Mercer Street, uh, which is, uh, uh, two units, uh, to, uh, combine that into, um, essentially one building to erect a rear addition, uh, and a vertical addition and to change the legal occupancy to a six-family dwelling. Uh, this application is being held, heard in conjunction with twelve Mercer Street, which is a property adjacent to eight to ten on the right. If one, we're looking at it from Mercer Street, uh, twelve Mercer Street is part of the project, uh, because, uh, there would be a shared driveway created with, uh, a recorded easement between eight and ten and, uh, and the owner of twelve Mercer Street, who's not my client, uh, Mark Little. Uh, this will allow for the... This will allow for the creation of parking for both properties where currently none exists. There would be six off-street parking spaces in the rear unenclosed for 8-10 Mercer. And for 12 Mercer, there would be two new parking spaces for use of that property also in the rear of that building. The plans that the board have have been revised since the original permit plans. It has not changed the unit count. It has somewhat changed the massing and the size of the proposed building. So what has happened since the original plans were submitted is the height of the building was reduced a bit from just over 40 feet to just over 39 feet, 39 feet 8 inches. Certain windows have been removed. The partial fourth floor has been reduced in size, including the size of the decks, and it has been pushed back, set back further from the front of the building. That was in response for preserving... I'm sorry, been pulled up closer to the front of the building. That was in response to preserving some existing view corridors for residents up on Telegraph Street. The... In the rear setback of the addition was increased by three feet. So the setback was increased and the size of the addition reduced. The building was also modified in appearance to look a bit more traditional like the rest of the street. The six units, Unit 1 and 2 of the building would each be bi-level units, quite sizable, two bedrooms of over 2,000 square feet, each 2,400, 2,600 square feet. Again, those are bi-level units with living space but not sleeping rooms in the basement. Units 3 and 4 also two-bedroom units of just over 1,400 square feet. And Units 5 and 6, which are also bi-level units because of that addition of a partial fourth story, would be over 1,700 square feet. Those are two bedrooms with offices, which would be the top level. And each of those units would have a private roof deck, 13 and 1/2 feet by 15 feet for each roof deck. The zoning here is MFR. This is multi-family residential. So the maximum FAR is 2.0, and the maximum building height is 40 feet. The FAR here is 2.4, and the building height is still in violation... I'm sorry, is just under. I believe it's been reduced. It's about 40 feet. The violation is still on the refusal letter, but I think we're just about at the maximum height under code.
Okay, so... Collad, can you please go to that basement view and show us about the proposed living space in the basement? So, Mr. Maransy, please tell us how this would work?
Certainly. So the basement space for each Unit 1 and Unit 2 consists of living space in the rear and then kitchens in the front. In the rear, and this is, I guess, what we're calling it now. I'm seeing architects refer to areaways. And that is essentially an excavated area in the back, which is open to above. So there are full walkout doors and windows in the rear, back in the living area. Those doors open into that areaway. And then there are stairs going up to grade from there. The building is substantially more below grade approaching the Mercer Street side. There are still small slat windows for the kitchen, which are indicated on the view that we're looking at here, the floor plans, but they're also more visible on the side elevations.
So the connection to the bedroom space is around the kitchen to get to the bedrooms upstairs? Okay?
The stairways are... Yes, stairways go up to the ground floor level, which is the bedroom level for those units.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, first of all, there's no plot plan showing the parking with the easement with Number 12. So it just isn't there. The basement is mostly below grade. And even with... I mean, all the areaway means is you've just dug out a portion of the rear and then created steps to go up. It's still well below grade. And I don't see dimensions showing the floor to bottom of the sill in terms of the Mercer Street side. So, and the... I guess the fourth floor office bedroom was reduced in size, but it seems to be sort of a funny combination of trying to maintain traditional design and then modern design on the vertical addition and the rear addition. So I think this would require extensive design review. But, Mr. Maransy, do you know what the dimensions are from the floor of the basement to the bottom of the window sills?
I know Mark Little is on, and I know I asked him that, and I just wrote it down, but I'm going to ask Mark again because I can't find it. Mark, I know it's adequate, but can you speak to the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Yes. The floor-to-ceiling height in the basement is 8 foot 4 inches. And as far as the height from the floor to the window sills at the rear, I'd have to imagine they're going to be about 24 inches.
So it's...
No, no, no. I'm not talking in the rear. I'm talking in the front, by the kitchen that Mr. Maransy referred to as kitchen slats.
So...
Yeah. I'm sorry, this is George Maransy. I'm not sure what that is, but they're not intended. Mr. Olick, quite frankly, has escape windows. Minimum... I'm sorry, maximum distance from floor to sill height is a building code requirement for escape windows for sleeping rooms, bedrooms.
I'm not talking about egress. I'm talking about natural light and ventilation. I think there's too much... There's too much of a tendency to build dungeons in our...
So I could add some input to that. On the front elevation of the building, they look like traditional windows, but what didn't make it into the band design was we intend to use much taller, larger windows that essentially go from just a couple of inches above the sidewalk grade right up to the ceiling, letting that natural light illuminate that lower kitchen area. I mean, if you're standing in the kitchen area, the ceiling is quite literally about 17 feet above you because of that open floor concept. We really want to enhance that with greater windows. And again, sorry, just didn't make it onto the final design front elevation, but we fully intend to do that with a BPDA review.
Okay. Well, that would certainly help with natural light.
Yes, absolutely. Agreed.
And, Mr. Little, for future reference, we're not going to... We'd like to see something real presented to us and not kind of default, you know, for future BPDA design review because really, you know, the onus rests on this board.
I fully understand, and I do apologize. I fully understand.
Yes, thank you.
That includes the plot plan. There should have been a plot plan included.
Agreed.
This is George Maransy. There absolutely was a plot plan because we wouldn't have been able to submit either application. So I don't... I can't control what finds its way onto the presentation screen here. But with each application, a plot plan was submitted. 12 Mercer Street was submitted simply as a use of premises permit. So the entire plan, the 12 Mercer Street, was the driveway and the two parking spaces. So, you know, so they were submitted.
And, Mr. Maransy, that will be submitted to the registry?
If this were to be approved, Madam Chair, there would be a shared easement agreement that would be recorded at the registry of deeds. ISD would require that before issuing a use of premises permit for the parking.
And tell us what's on the property at 12 Mercer?
12 is actually... Mark, is that a single family or a two?
I believe it's an existing two-family.
So I just want to make sure that on 12 Mercer, that with the existing two-family, that it doesn't trigger them losing their open space or whatever the rest of the requirements are to accommodate the parking.
That's a separate application that's actually being heard contemporaneously with 8-10 right now. 12 Mercer Street resulted in a zoning refusal letter for insufficient usable open space and for design of off-street parking facilities because of the shared driveway. So this is actually two hearings happening at the same time. We're also seeking relief for those violations for 12 Mercer.
Exactly. So, Mr. Olick, have you had a chance to look at 12 Mercer?
I... Well, I don't think I have it.
And that looks like on our screen. I think I just saw this like...
I'm sorry. I... Yes, it's in a completely different section. But I'm looking at it now, and I don't see a plot plan.
I think I just saw a hint of a plot plan on the screen when I saw 12 Mercer. It looked like it came up and then it kind of disappeared, but I think it's there.
Well, I'm looking at what was...
I think it's right there. Is that... Oops. See, when that link was clicked on, it looked like... I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong, but I thought it was there.
No, at least what I have for plans preview that doesn't include anything past part. Yeah.
Hi, Madam Chair. Collad here. I definitely don't have a plot plan.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Maransy and Mr. Little, please explain how the parking would work?
Sure. It's about... I think the width of the shared driveway is 9 feet 1 inch. 10 feet is required by the code. I think that's correct, Mark. And there are six parking spaces associated with 8-10. The board saw that in the back, this is... This building has a vertical addition, which is posted. So the cars are basically not enclosed in a garage in the rear, but they park partially underneath the building. For 12 Mercer, which is on the right, the cars drive down the driveway, turn right, and there are simply two parking spaces at grade in the rear yard.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board?
So just, Mr. Maransy, the way you described it, you're in the rear of the horizontal addition, which is elevated on posts. There will be parking underneath. And then there'll be a quote-unquote "areaway" and stairs going down from that level to the basement unit?
Yeah. Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Olick. I was just scrolling through my own plan. So for 8-10, the parking spaces are aligned along the rear lot line. So they're not coming up, and they're not impinging in the area of the areaway. They're actually pushed all the way to the rear.
Okay.
And that's, I think, Sheet A-10, if I have it correctly.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Hailey Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have 22 signatures on one page, and we have one letter of opposition. The opposition's a height.
Okay. Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Hi, Madam of the Chair. Members of the Board, Deboa Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition based on feedback from the neighbors and the Dorchester Heights Neighborhood Association, who is also in opposition. Residents have highlighted the high of the building, added density, parking, and privacy concerns with the roof deck. We'd like more work done with the neighbors, Dorchester Heights Neighborhood Association on this proposal. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Karen Spohley, City Council in East Rose Abbey, Georgia's office. Would like to echo the sentiments of Councilor Flynn and oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, no raised hands.
Thank you. Any response, Mr. Maransy?
Madam Chair, my client can comment on this. I was surprised to hear opposition from Dorchester Heights Association. I think my client emailed Dorchester Heights two or three times. I've never got a response to that. Mark, you might want to confirm. As for height, I think we're actually zoning compliant. As I said, if it's not zoning compliant, it may be a few inches over 40 feet. But I think the revised set of plans that I have showed the height of 39.8. But once again, it's just about zoning compliant with respect to height.
Yeah. I would like to add that I am a little surprised to hear any opposition on this project. I mean, I worked tirelessly from the initial set of plans that were submitted. I have several meetings with all my close neighbors and the butters on all their input, all their revisions, all their concerns, and made those changes, the set of drawings, twice. And at the last meeting I had with them, everyone was in full support, and I gladly, happily moved forward to the ZBA with that confident support that I had. So I'm a little surprised that the opposition has come up. I'm wondering, is it new opposition or old stuff?
Hold on, hold on, everybody. Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve a little bit reluctantly because I think there's a bunch of work that needs to be done. But Jeff, we're going to be counting on the BPDA to do some serious design review.
And, Mr. Olick, let's itemize what the proposed design review that you want addressed.
Well, one is just to try to combine... It's a little hard to see without renderings, but based on the elevations, it seems like there's an attempt to mix different traditional and more contemporary design styles, and I think that needs to be addressed.
Do you want to have just an extensive review for neighborhood context?
Yes, and also for natural lighting in the basement area.
Yes. And on that basement front, we are, as a board, have strong opinions about any new renovations, including basements that includes basement space. This is a throwback to the '30s or something like that that isn't something that's really supportive of the neighborhood anymore. So, please have that... This is essentially, you can call with Mr. Olick. Is there a second?
Does second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I believe that there needs to be two votes, Madam Chair. There's also 12 Mercer.
Yes, and so may I have a motion for that? Thank you for reminding us.
Motion to, motion to approve with BPDA design review.
And that's in buffering. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Was there a second on that?
Yes, yes, a second.
Thank you. So we will, we will take a, a break until eleven-thirty. The meeting is adjourned. However, in the meantime, anybody who is requesting a deferral, please let Madam Sec, Madam Ambassador know so she can inform Mr. Secretary so we can just make sure we, we proceed. The meeting is now, now, uh, on break. Thank you. The meeting for October twenty-seventh is back in session. Before we begin, anybody who's on the line, please make sure that you press star three to raise your hand to be recognized. We have a comment on the last case, which was the Mercer, eight to ten Mercer Street and twelve Mercer Street in Ward seven, so this should be logged into the case file because Mr. Westlow at Nineteen Gate Street sent a comment, and that should be logged in. Go ahead, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna call the cases for eleven-thirty rediscussions. If you are deferring or withdrawing, could you please give me the address before you speak? So at this time, I'm gonna call for deferrals or withdrawals for eleven-thirty.
One thirty-two Marginal Street, Mr. Secretary.
For the record, calling BOA one zero four three four zero seven, one thirty-two Marginal Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linz, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, we've worked diligently with respect to this project with the surrounding neighborhood. We have worked to gain a lot of support for this particular proposal. There is one direct abutter who we continue to hopefully work with. And we believe that there could be one more change to this project that hopefully will address the outstanding concerns. So we're asking for a final deferral on this, and we plan to proceed either way at the next deferred date regardless.
Okay, so are you still at six units?
That is correct.
Okay. May I have a motion for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
I have a date of January twenty-sixth at one o'clock.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Eight thirty-seven Saratoga.
For the record, calling BOA one zero two two nine two two one, eight thirty-seven Saratoga Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linz, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this is undergoing a plan update that will need to be reviewed by ISD, and therefore, we would not be able to proceed today.
Okay, may I have a motion for deferral?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can carries the date, please.
A date of January twenty-sixth at one o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Mr. Clark, I have some raised hands. Caller, you're unmuted. Ms. Hoffman, you're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Catherine Hoffman. I'm on one sixty R Washington Street, Brighton.
Are you, are you deferring? Are you withdrawing?
Deferring, deferring.
All right, let me call it into the record before you speak. Calling BOA one zero one two zero zero eight, one ninety rear, R Washington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
One sixty R Washington Street, Brighton, Massachusetts.
Yes, your name and, your name and address, please.
My name is Catherine Hoffman, thirty-four Brinton Road, Brooklyn.
Okay, may I have a motion for deferral, please?
What is, what is, one oh nine R one ninety, and the applicant is saying one sixty? What's the address?
One ninety for the record, Mr. Olick.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer. I thought the applicant said one sixty.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The date, please.
You'll have a date of January twenty-sixth at one o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
I'm gonna try that other ca, oh, he put his hand down.
Is Mr. Abner on? Or Ms. Abner on for Euclid Street?
Ms. Chair, I'm looking, I don't see, is that's Abner?
Okay, so let's proceed with Alpine.
Okay, very good. Calling case BOA one zero zero one zero five two sixty-two Alpine Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a four-family. The violation is Article fifty, section twenty-eight. Use of regulations for apartments is a conditional use in a three F four thousand sub-district. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the usable open space is insufficient. And Article fifty, section forty-three, must be parking and loading. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Mr. Clark, I don't see Aaron Robinson or any raised hands other than the ones that were previously raised and have already spoken.
Okay. Um, and there's nobody here for Euclid?
No. Do you want me to go through the callers? There's only one other caller on the phone. Do you want me to check in and see?
Just, just check and see who, who it is, please.
Hi, caller, you're unmuted. Caller? If your phone number ends in seven, three, one, four, you're unmuted. Nothing, Miss, Madam Clerk.
Okay, so there's, is there, so there is nobody on for this session, then?
Um, no, the only two cases were sixty-two Alpine and eighteen Euclid, and no one has come forward. The people that have their hands raised, one is Minor Perez, the other one, we already see, was from the last case, and Ms. Hoffman already spoke. Unless I can unmute her and see if she has another case, just to go.
I doubt it. How about, I think it's Mr. Escobar. He's the only one I think might be, um...
Yeah, I don't.
Okay. Okay, so, um, so I think the note, um...
Herman Escobar? He's, he's just, he's not responding.
He works for us.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so then I, do I see anybody who's not City Hall or is a regular here? No, I guess not. Okay, so, um, I guess what we'll do is we will...
Jessica Thomas is here. I apologize, I wasn't muted.
Jessica, do you know what's happening on Alpine or Euclid Street?
No, I sent a message to the, to the architect, just asking if he's on the call. It hasn't been heard back. I know we were speaking up to, until yesterday, he knew the call was today, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Okay, so did I understand that Euclid was gonna be deferring?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay, but we still, we don't have the applicant on the line. Okay, so, Jessica?
Yes.
Let's see, the next case, the next hearing is at one o'clock. Um, I'm thinking that we take a break until twelve-thirty. I'm sorry, Board of Appeal members, because I can't figure out how else to do this. Let's take a break until twelve-thirty. Ms. Ambassador or Ms. Thomas, if, if Alpine or Euclid come on board, please have them stay on the line, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
I just, I just gotta, can we take care of the advisory stuff now, or no?
No, one o'clock.
Okay.
We don't have any advisory.
Oh, we don't have any, oh, sorry. I just read the email, sorry.
Yes, so next, next time we will. Okay, so let's, we are adjourned until twelve-thirty, okay? Seventh is back in session. Um, we understand that the applicant for sixty-two Alpine Street is here. Mr. Robinson, please make sure you're ready to go. Mr. Fortune, Mr. Fortune, please, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I think we should take the deferral, what Euclid's gonna defer. So I want to pull that one in for the record.
Let's do that.
Okay. Calling BOA nine five eight four six two, eighteen Euclid Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Project Wright, eighteen Euclid Street, Dorchester, Mass, oh two one two four.
And what are you, what are you requesting, a deferral or a withdrawal?
Deferral.
A deferral, okay. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
You'll have a date of January twenty-sixth at one o'clock. January twenty-sixth at one o'clock.
You got that, ma'am? Okay, good.
And I'm gonna call the only case for rediscussion that's here. It's calling BOA one zero zero one zero five two sixty-two Alpine Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family. The violation is Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article fifty, section twenty-nine, open space insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Norberto Leon, and I'm from Chelmsford, Mass, and I'm the architect for the project.
Okay, is the property owner that aren't also?
Uh, no, I, I do not believe he's on right now. We, we, we got notified today, and I didn't realize that we were gonna be on, so I'm, I'm the only one on right now.
Okay, and so clarify, is this a change of occupancy from a two to a three or a two, four?
Uh, no, two to a three. We had initially requested two to a four, so we are, we amended our application to three units.
And are those the plans that are in the Board of Appeals' office?
Uh, yes, let me see. Um, the ones, the ones that were, the latest ones were debated by the Plans Examiner on September thirtieth. Yeah, they have the stamp, yep. These are the right ones, yep.
Okay, so please go ahead and tell us where this third unit is proposed to be.
So the, what we're doing is, we're gonna have the third unit at the top floor, on the third floor. Um, let's see here, so, yeah, easier. So the one, the drawing on the left side, the plan on the left side is the third floor, and the first and the second floors are gonna be one unit each.
Okay, so tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in the attic.
Uh, it's, it's right now completely open, so we're gonna keep it, we're gonna keep it at eight feet. Um, I mean, we're gonna make it eight feet, 'cause it's, it's open to the roof above right now.
Okay, um, okay, um, and how many bedrooms is it proposed to be in? What's the square footage?
Uh, it's two bedrooms and the approx, I don't have that number off the top of my head, the square footage of the unit.
It looks like it should be pretty similar to the square footage of the units below.
Correct.
There's a building permit sign in the window. What is that for?
The building, the, the sign in the, I'm sorry, can you?
Okay, so, so can you just ask, tell me if the applicant is proposing to clean up the frontage of this building? Clean up the, the front?
Yeah, so we're gonna actually be doing, we're proposing a new deck at the front of the property. Uh, there's an existing headhouse and stone wall in the front of the property, and we're gonna be putting a new deck, and we're gonna be cleaning that whole area.
Okay, so I'm looking at Alpine, oh, yeah, so you're gonna take out that door that's there and things like that, right?
Yes, that's correct, and we have a little elevation in our drawings showing you what the, what the, what that front elevation is gonna look like now with the proposed deck.
Okay, and, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Um, the drawings are okay, not great. Um, one question for the architect. The driveway on the, on the proposed site plan, L O two, you're show, you're showing, or, I mean, it's not that one, on one of, on the plot plan, yeah, I'm sorry, the plot plan at the end. You're showing ten foot three from the corner of the building to the lot line, but then there's a concrete walk instead of stairs that intrudes into that. So what is the width of the driveway off the sidewalk? It looks awfully narrow unless it extends into the other property.
So if you go to the, to the certified plot plan, which I believe is the next floor plan, I mean, the next plan on the side.
I'm looking at the proposed plot, plot plan, the last, yeah, right there.
So that, that little stairway that is on the driveway side is about thirty-six inches, so it, it...
Okay, so that's, that's all you have, is seven feet. That's not enough.
Yeah, just to go, so we, we asked the Plans Examiner to look at this, and I asked him if he had any concerns about the narrow driveway, and he was fine with what we're showing here.
Really?
So, no, but, yeah, no, you know, we're not proposing to use that as a parking area. It's just gonna, we're just gonna drive by it. All the parking is gonna be in the back right now. Um, as you can see by some of the existing photographs that we have, they already, they use that now as a, that's where they park all the cars on the side there, even with that, that concrete walkway.
Hmm, what's, what's, what's next door? Is there a wall, or is it just land or a fence, or what is it?
It's just land. It's, it's actually city-owned land that is empty right now.
Oh, so probably the cars go, to some degree, on that land?
Uh, it's, it's possible.
I don't see how seven feet is, is too narrow for driveway.
It looks like, it looks like on this Google Maps, it looks like there is a, an ice cream truck parked right next to the, to the stairwell, and it looks like it may intrude a little bit, but not much onto the adjacent property.
Yeah, I have some, I have a couple of photographs, too. Um, the driveway and some cars parked in the existing driveway there, too. There's not a lot of, that I can tell that, you know, they're encroaching.
Okay, there is a photograph on the L O one, the existing site plan. Colette, you could pull that up and, and, which shows, yeah, keep going, Colette. Yeah, the, yeah, the, the bottom left photograph there. Yeah, it looks like that you have to go a little bit on the other property. All right, well, whatever.
So you can see the, so you can see the cur, the end of the curb car is basically the property line on the left side.
Yeah.
And that, that car is to the right of the property line right now.
Okay.
Okay, and is the abutting property, is that still a hole in the ground? Or has that been worked on?
Uh, on, on the corner, it's, it looks like they've done a lot, oh, with the corner development, that's, that's well on its way.
Okay.
But on the left side, the city-owned property, that's still just empty space right now.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, well, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, the petitioner has been working extensively with the neighborhood group, Tommy's Rock. We held an abutters meeting on November eighteenth, twenty nineteen. After working with the community, the owner has decided to reduce the project from a four unit to a three, and we'd like to go on record to support the project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Samuel Ruttado, on behalf of President Kim Janey, City Council. She would like to go in the records of all of this project. Uh, these are two long-term residents who have been going back and forth with the association, so we're glad, and so they can move on and, and, and fix the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have three letters, I'm sorry, eleven letters of support and three letters of opposition, but the opposition looks like the letters were from January two thousand twenty, and when it was a four, you, four, four family, it's down to a three now, so.
Okay, excellent, excellent. So may I have a motion, please? Oh, Ms. Ms. Ambassador, any more raised hands?
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I think Samuel wanted to say...
I think Samuel wanted to speak on this from, unless he already did. I mean, you're on mute. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve. And do we need designer view? Are they doing?
Yeah, yes.
What, what designer view?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set, good luck. Okay, um, the board, the board will adjourn for 20 minutes and will be back in session for 1 o'clock. Anybody requesting deferrals, withdrawals? Please make sure you're in touch with Miss Ambassador so that we can be timely in our process. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. All board members, are you on?
We are ready.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Fortune, run with it.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 1 o'clock hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 1 o'clock? Could you please give me the address before you speak?
32 Pearl Street.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA 1099, 1097303, 32 Pearl Street. Name and address, for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 11 Beacon Street. We are here today seeking a deferral for the matter of 32 Pearl. We heard from the Mayor's Office this week that there were some concerns from rare abutters. We are going to make additional modifications. And if so, grant it the deferral. We were given a date for November for a, a meeting to meet with folks again.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the date, please.
We have a date of February 2nd.
Thank you very much.
That's February 2nd, 2021, at 1 o'clock.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Yes.
Mr. Fortune? Address, please.
To Oakland Street.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA 1106430, to Oakland Street. Please.
Is this a request for a deferral or a withdrawal?
Madam Chair, this is a request for a deferral.
Okay, tell us why you need a deferral.
Yes, Madam Chair, um, we've been...
Would you give an address on the record for me, please, first? Thank you.
Excuse me, my apologies. Alec Benelli from Pulchini and Norton, 10 Forbes Road. Madam Chair, we've been working with the neighbors and have reoriented the location of the building on the property. And just haven't had a chance to get those plans fully circulated through ISD at this time. So we just want to have that opportunity before we come back to you.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for...
Second.
You have a date of February 2nd?
Thank you.
2021.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
135 Harrisoff, Mr. Fortune, but not 139, only 135.
Okay, thank you. For the record, calling BOA 1069729, 135 Harrisoff Street. Name and address, for the record, please.
George Marancy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, I'm requesting a deferral on 135 Harrisoff only, which was a proposal for a new six-family dwelling on a subdivided lot. My clients finally reached agreement with Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association last night, but the board does not have these plans. 139 Harrisoff Street, which is next door, which is a renovation and change of occupancy from a two to a three. There have been no changes made to that, and the board has those plans. So I'd like to defer 135, but keep today's hearing on for 139 Harrisoff.
However, Mr. Marancy, the, um, the advertisement for 139 Harrison talks about the shared proposed parking. Will there be parking on 135 for 139?
Um, well, it's a shared, it is a shared driveway.
Is it just for access?
So I, I thought I would make the request, but I told my, my clients that, that the board may view these as connected, literally because of the driveway.
Yep, so let's make a motion for both of them for the deferral. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the date.
You have a date of February 2nd, 2021, at 1 o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Clark, I have another one.
Yes, go ahead, Madam Ambassador. Address, please.
Pamela, you're on mute.
Oh, thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Address, please.
233 Metropolitan Avenue.
Okay, thank you, hold on two seconds. For the record, calling BOA 1073949, 233 Metropolitan Ave. There is a companion case, BOA 1073954, 233 Rare Metropolitan Avenue. Name and address, for the record, please.
Pamela Barty, 233 Metropolitan Avenue in Rosendale.
And what are you requesting?
I am kindly requesting a deferral, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, we accidentally got put into this hearing. Although we do have a little of neighborhood work to do. So I was seeking a deferral until February in order to have additional meetings with neighbors to address any concerns.
Thank you. Hold on, hold on. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Okay, um, all, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We have a date of February 2nd, 2021, at 1 o'clock.
Okay, um, also, may I call the applicant up for 85 Region Street? Because I understand that it looks like it's been advertised for Ward 9, when in fact it is, um, um, for Ward 12 in Roxbury.
Captain O'Connor here. I don't know that that to be true. It looks like it's correctly advertised. The correct article is cited. It could be just that it's on the boundary and slightly over the next ward. But I don't, I haven't seen any evidence that it incorrectly advertised.
Yes, I also have, I understand from Lorraine Wheeler from Tommy's Rock that the helper has not met with the Neighborhood Association, unless there's a, a second Region Street somewhere else. Is, is the applicant, Mr. Vigilio, on, on?
Madam Chair, Tom Miller, McDermott Colton Miller, Austin. I'm here representing the applicant.
Okay, did you guys meet with Tommy Rock, Tommy's Rock?
Madam Chair, when we filed the appeal, we reached out to Jessica Thomas of ONS and asked her specifically what, uh, what community outreach she would like us to participate in. And we completed, um, we completed the process as, as requested by ONS. Mr., Mr. Cochran, who is the applicant and owner of the property, he also resides there, spent a good deal of time going to his individual neighbors, presenting the project to them.
So, so, so which, which neighborhood group did he meet with?
He didn't meet with any neighborhood group.
What I'd like you to do is I'd like you guys to, before, we'll get to you eventually. But please, in the meantime, have an offline conversation with Jessica. Because, um, you know, it comes through as if Tommy's Rock should have been consulted. Okay, so in the meantime, let's go ahead with the other cases. And in the meantime, you clarify with Jessica and, um, and what happened on, on this case, okay?
All right, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, is there any other hands raised before I go to the first case?
Yeah, I think Pamela is, I, I'm sorry if I didn't hear, but she wanted to defer 233R. Did that happen?
Just already happened.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm going to call the first case, calling BOA 1068581, 9 Batchelder Street. This is renovation of a two-family unit, framing installation. Living space from a two-bedroom, unit two adds a dormit and two-bedroom and attic and roof deck. Dividing is Article 50, Section 29. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, usable open spaces insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address, for the record, please.
Call me, you're on mute.
Sorry, did anybody hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
My Lamb, 21 Batchelder Street, representing the homeowner, Mohammed Bella.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed.
We're proposing to expand the living space into the basement as well as the roof area. We're proposing two bedrooms in the, uh, the roof with a bathroom. That's part of the second floor unit. So the second floor and the third floor is considered as one unit. And then, um, the other unit is the first floor is being expanded into the basement area.
And so tell us what, what will be in the basement? Will there be bedrooms in the basement?
Yes, there are. There are two bedrooms in the basement and a bathroom.
So tell us about the floor to ceiling height in the basement.
I believe the, the floor to ceiling height is, um, the finished floor is like eight feet tall.
Okay, and, um, it looks like there are a few issues with this. Okay, so I, I looked this up and it looks like your, your, um, the property owner recently bought this building. Is that true?
Yes, I believe he bought it about a year ago.
Okay, so, um, the, the issue, and, and Mr. Ehrlich will look at that in further detail. So I will just leave it. So unit one will have the proposed two bedrooms in the basement. And unit two will just have the two bedrooms in the proposed attic? Is that what, what, what I'm understanding?
No, the first unit would be, the first floor has a living room, dining room, and one bedroom. And then the basement has two bedrooms with a bathroom.
Okay, so...
And then the second unit on the...
Okay, go ahead.
Yep, and then on the second floor, it's, um, living room, dining room, kitchen with a, with a, uh, a bedroom on the second floor. And then it goes up to the third floor, which has two bedrooms with a bathroom.
Okay, so each are going to be three-bedroom units. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
They're a little, a little, uh, not very informative, uh, because they don't, they show elevations, but they don't give any height. So for example, if you look at S21, Colette, um, there's, uh, you can see the grade line, yeah, that one. Scroll down just a little bit more. You can see the grade line, um, relative to the basement. But there's no dimension. It doesn't show the floor to ceiling. It doesn't show the floor to window sill. Most of the basement is below grade. And also, we're once again in the situation of having bedrooms, living space in a below-grade environment. And I can't, I, I can't, there's no dimensions here. So I don't know what, what, you know, how, how much of a problem it is or it isn't.
So I think it's fine for us as a board, because we have done it in the past to approve part of the proposal, but not all of the proposal. You know, so, um, please, board members, keep that in mind. How about, how about the second floor unit?
Madam Chair, can I ask, can I ask the applicant if he can, uh, uh, provide information about the dimensions? What is the floor to sill, window sill height in the basement, uh, unit?
One of the, the biggest window, the floor to sill is about, uh, I believe it's the two and a half feet above floor, uh, finished floor.
Okay, that, that's, so if you're looking at that elevation, let's say the elevation number four, the bottom left one, you're talking about the window that's over on the, on the right side. What about the one on the left side? What about the one on the left?
The one, the one on the left is, um, it's showing, uh, about three and a half feet.
Looks like it would be, have to be a little higher than that.
Does. And is there a window well on the, is there a window well on the one on the right? Because that, uh, that's below grade, the half of the windows below grade.
Yeah, there is, uh, there is a window well.
I wish you had provided plans that showed all that.
Okay.
Let's see, um, Mr. Ehrlich, my first glance seemed to indicate that utilities were part of that basement unit.
Yeah.
Does each, does each, each unit have their separate utilities? I'm asking this of the applicant's representative?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Can you explain how? There's a stairwell, you look at the proposed foundation, A21, there's a stairwell coming down, uh, uh, into the basement that seems to service both the, the unit one and the utilities. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the common area utility.
Right, but it doesn't seem to be separated from the units. It also seems to be the, the...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me see. Just give me one second, please. Okay, I'm sorry. I, I stand corrected. That utility room in the first, uh, in the basement serves the first unit. And then on the, um, on the second floor, there's a utility room that serves the, the second floor unit.
Where is that? I don't see that on the plans.
Okay, it's, uh, I'm shown here, it's on, I'm sorry, it's on the third floor, the third floor.
The third floor.
So, Colette, can you scroll up to the third floor?
The plan is A0.2.
A2.2, I'm looking proposed third floor, A2.2. I don't see a utility room there either. Madam Chair, I would suggest that we defer this. They, they have, they've got to get better, better drawings.
I'll make a motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
February 2nd, 2021, at 1 o'clock.
Thank you. We're going to skip Region for now.
Okay. Calling the next case, calling BOA 1098870, 60 to 66 South Street. This is a change of use of 68 South Street to a tattoo studio. Violation of Article 55, Section 16. Use is conditional, tattoo studio use is a conditional use in this zoning sub-district. Article 55, Section 40, our street parking is insufficient. Name and address, for the record, please.
Gabrielle Hahn, 39 Hutchings Street, Dorchester, Massachusetts, O2121.
So please tell us what's being proposed.
Just putting in a small boutique tattoo studio.
And what does tattoo, is this the regular type of tattoo or is it a beauty? And what does tattoo, is this a regular type of tattoo, or is it a beauty type of tattoo?
Regular tattooing.
Okay, and is this a commercial space?
Yes.
Okay, can you scroll up a little bit, Colette, so we can see the layout? Okay, and how many beds in that space? Looks like you have three beds?
Three booths, yes.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawing's fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lindsey Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting was held for this proposal, August 6, 2020, worthy of abutters express support. The applicant also received the support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, so the mayor's office would like to go on record and support the proposal, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have six letters of support and we have two letters of opposition. The opposition is traffic and opposing the tattoo parlor is in itself.
Okay. Madam Chair, no raised hands. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second, Joe.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1112-820, 21 Morse Street. This is to erect a new seven-unit multi-family building on a vacant lot. The violation is Article 50, Section 28, seven units are forbidden. Article 50, Section 29, lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the lot width is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the lot frontage is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, side yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, our street parking and loading requirement. And Article 50, Section 44.2, conformity with existing building alignment. Name and address, pull the record, please.
Hello, Madam Chair, board, my name is Anthony Monahan, representing for 21 Morse Street in Dorchester. We are applying for, we have an empty lot of land next to our existing three-family. We own the lot of land, we're applying for six units.
Can you hold on for one second? Madam Ambassador, is there a way of clearing up his echoiness? Yeah, he might be connected to two different devices. Mr. Monahan, are you connected to two different devices?
No.
Or is it something that's connected? I'm sorry?
I just have my laptop here.
All right, you actually sound better now.
Okay.
So don't move, just stay put.
I can repeat that, my name's Anthony Monahan, owner of the lot of land here. It's a vacant lot of land right now. We own the three-family right next door. We are applying for six condos with six parking spots. We have met with the Neighborhood Association and the abutters numerous occasions over the summer, and we believe we have full support of this project.
Okay, these are a lot of violations.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Chair, it's seven units, I pulled it for the record, it says seven units, not six.
Yeah, he must have decreased it through community process. So can you please tell us what, I mean, as I was saying before, these are a lot of violations. Decreasing it by one unit, has that decreased any of your, or eliminated any of your violations?
It has not eliminated, I'm not sure if you have the updated refusal letter in front of you that was issued October 22nd?
I'm just assuming that they would be pretty, it's, because yes, how have you changed it when you change from seven to, from seven to six units?
So if you scroll to the very top of the plans, right at the very top, there is a table breaking that down on the first page.
Colette, can you please zoom in on that table at the bottom of the first page?
It's actually in the very top of the first page, Madam Chair.
On the right-hand?
Yep, top, top, next to the address, it says modifications from the original set, it is 62. Unit count reduced from seven to six. Roof decks and headhouses have been removed. Half of the fourth floor has been removed. We reduced the building from 9,200 square feet down to 7,198. The rear decks have...
Let's, let's, let's hold on, so what is the zoning district that this is in?
The zoning district that this is in, I believe this is in a 3F 5,000.
So this is a 3F 5,000, so you, it means you need as a base, a 5,000-unit lot? What is the square footage of this lot?
This lot here, Madam Chair, is, the square footage is 4,400 square feet.
Okay, so you just still need to, you still need to talk through why, when you have a small lot like that, you're proposing six units?
We actually went in front of the neighborhood and booked seven.
I just, I just need to know the rationale, because then, I, regardless about your neighborhood process, this is a lot of violations and it's basically doubling the number of units allowed. Can you tell us what the breakdown of the units are? How many two- and three-bedroom units and what the square footage of the units are?
Of course, so meeting with the neighborhood, they really were pushing us for homeownership and smaller condo-type units, which is the reason why we didn't do big three- or four-bedroom rentals. We have six units here, one one-bed and five two-beds.
So one one-bed, and what's the size of that one bed?
One-bedroom unit is 740 square feet. The two beds are mixed between 910 square feet, 840 square feet, and 1,070. So they're all, you know, two-bed, two-bath.
And is any residential space proposed for the basement?
There's no residential space in the basement, there are six parking spots at grade, and the one-bedroom unit will be at grade for handicap accessibility.
Colette, can you please scroll through the plans so we can just quickly look at the layout? In the meantime, Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
The plans are adequate.
Mr. Ehrlich, do you have the updated plans?
I'm showing six units.
Yeah, this is, this is plan, it's saying 1020.
Okay.
1320, yeah, and there's no headhouse or roof deck, so I think this is the updated set of plans.
Okay. Any, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
They're adequate.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Well, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, secretary here, we have five letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? I'm going to go on record in opposition because of the, the density. But motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 107-0813, 12 Everett Street. This is to erect a new seven-unit multi-family building on a current vacant parcel. The violation is Article 55, Section 8. The MFR is forbidden in the 3F 5,000 sub-district. And Article 55, Section 9, the lot frontage is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Eric, you're on mute. Miss, Madam Chair, he's present and I am muted him twice, he keeps muting himself. Eric? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
Yes, Eric DiNacola, 12 Everett Street.
So tell us what's being proposed?
We're proposing a six-unit multi-family building on a 13,000-plus-square-foot parcel currently vacant.
So let me ask you this question, I saw, I glanced when Colette was scrolling, is that a newly created lot, or is that the lot that's historically been there?
It's historically been there.
So it's been a flag lot historically?
That's correct.
And did you guys do the development next to it?
Yes, the, not, no, 16 Everett, no. We were debated.
Hello, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was, I'm very sorry, this is attorney Mike Ross. I was having audio problems getting on, I'm now on, if I may continue, please.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you very much, and again, my apologies. So this is a 13,231-square-foot lot in a 3F 5,000 sub-district in JP. The first shot is actually, I'm sorry, the first page of the plans is a good way to just introduce this lot to you, if you just want to go to the first page.
May I just ask clearly my question that I was asking before?
Yes.
Is, is this the same developer who did the lot next door?
No, it's not, the lot next door is 16 Everett Street, which was before you a couple years ago. That was a nine-unit building, I believe Lee Goodman was that developer. This is that pork-shopped-sized lot you see in the picture in front of you. And it fronts, it fronts, it abuts the MBTA right-of-way, the Green Street Station. It sits behind a existing three-unit building at 8 Everett Street, and it fronts that 25-foot frontage, that pork-chop end fronts the street of Everett Street. The two reliefs relate to that first issue, the lot frontage. Only a row house or a townhouse would be allowed to be within a 25-foot frontage. The rest would require lot-frontage relief, and so we're in front of you today for that. And then the second piece of relief relates to the number of units. We're in a 3F 5,000, this is six units that we're seeking today. So those are the two issues of relief.
So Council, can I just ask a couple of questions? I want to make sure once more that this is a historic parcel. It hasn't been newly created by the construction of 16 Everett Street or by, what is, what is it, 8 Everett Street?
Yes, that's correct.
It's been there, okay?
These were under, they have two different origins way back when, and they were sold as separate parcels. The first parcel, 8 Everett Street, was sold and developed by members of this team under a separate LLC. No relief was obtained, it was, it's already been sold as condominiums. I believe one is sold and two are pending, that's not the matter that we're in front of you with. The second parcel, the one we're in front of you with here, sits behind 8 Everett Street and was sold to this developer who's now in front of you. And just to round out kind of what we're proposing here, dimensionally, this project actually fits. It would, it would be as of right if it was a three-unit building, row house. So all the other issues as a result of the community process have worked itself out to be dimensionally as of right. The six units span from the sizes of 952 square feet to 1,697 square feet. So there's basically six units, there's eight parking spaces on the ground.
Tell us, tell us the breakdown of the units.
Yeah, yeah, and you can now scan through these plans a little bit, if you could, just to show the plan. So on the first floor, you have one unit with, on the same floor that has the parking. On the next slide, you'll see that, that's 952 square feet, and that's a two-bedroom. On the second floor, you'll have three units. There's Unit 2, Unit 3, and Unit 4. Unit 2 is 1,072, Unit 3 is a duplex, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and 1,697 square feet, extends up to the third floor.
And are these all two-bedrooms?
It's three two-beds and three three-beds. So Unit 1 is a two-bed, Unit 2 is a two-bed, Unit 3, that duplex, is a three-bed, and Unit 4 on the second floor is a three-bed. And then on the third floor, you have three units, you have that duplex in Unit 3, and then you have Unit 5 and Unit 6. And Unit 5 is a two-bed, it's 1,125 square feet. And you can scroll down there if you like, Unit 6 is 1,239 square feet, and that's a three-bed.
So on the front parcel at 8 Everett Street, how many units went up there? Did you say three or four? Three.
Three existing, they were converted and sold as condominiums.
Okay, so the reason I was asking about 16 is because I, I'd like to see what the treatment is between 12 and 16, because it looks like at 16, they put their parkings, their parking, their parking right by the property line with that, with that bare minimum cover right, right above the parking spaces. So how have you treated the property line between you guys and 16?
Yeah, maybe go up one more, I'm thinking there might be a good site plan here that we can show you. Maybe one more, please. Well, yeah, it's not great, I'm sorry, if you can go back two down then, if you could. So 16 is the building that's to the right of us, right there, that's fine, is the nine-unit building, and it would be on the lower part of your screen, you don't see it in this picture. 8, that three-bedroom condominium building that I mentioned, is in front of us. This is a substantially setback parcel, 80 feet. So that does have access through an easement, through the rear of the building. It's to the left of that screen is where, where 8 Everett is. So we don't expose our parking, although there are those two parking spaces at the end to the rightmost part of the plans, those are exposed. The other six units are under the building itself, and you won't see those.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, the drawings themselves are fine, I mean, but there's a fundamental problem here. This is a landlocked piece of, a landlocked lot, a pork-chop lot with, you know, and, and it's a six-units in a three, in a three-family district, so those are two major problems, but the plans are fine.
Yeah, I mean...
If I may, it's not landlocked, I mean, there is the access through the driveway to the property. You could do three units here, but they'd be 2,500 square feet apiece, and they'd be probably, you know, a couple million bucks. This is right next to the Green, Green Street Station transit-oriented development, so...
Mr. Ross, I live five minutes away, I know exactly where it is.
And on my walks from Green Street to Rosendale, I'm kind of blown away with that development that kind of went off next door at 16. So I'm just trying to imagine what a duplicate of that would look like in somebody's rear yard. In a few people's rear yard, as it is, I think it's four people's rear yard, is it?
Yeah, yeah, if you go to the top slide, the topmost slide, you actually do have a rendering of what it will look like. It's very, there you go, it's very Queen Anne architecture. It's tucked back, like I said, 80 feet from the street itself. So the immediate abutter on the other side of this building is a park. So there's actually no one there. The next abutter, swing to the left, Paul Shimick is in support of the project. There are, then the next house, you have a split home, you have half are in support and half are opposed. And so, yeah, I mean, there is, this is a developable lot. You could develop a three-family here. There is access for it. It would be as of right. But just to, you know, as I said, it is alongside the MBTA tracks. And, and the slope of the property itself helps you here. That slope, as you can see, tucks it lower than, we're not doing the full 35 feet here. This is a 29.
Yeah, yeah, just, and you know, you know, in an ideal world, the person who developed 8 should have developed this in conjunction so that at least there would be, you know, combined lots and then developed it, developed it as one big lot because, but it is what it is. Okay? Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. We understand that this had been controversial project and there has been concerns regarding density enassing. Multiple abutter meetings was held for this proposal and we should development team scale back the project from nine to six units to address these concerns. The project also abuts the train station, supporting trend-oriented development. The mayor's office would like to go on record in support with the design of you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McCleary from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support and would just ask that the development team continue to work with neighbors to mitigate as many issues as possible. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have 24 letters of support. We have 50 letters of opposition.
How many, 50?
50, five zero.
Okay, and any sense of what the opposition is based on?
And city is, density, I think, is the biggest one.
Okay. Is anybody here at this meeting to speak in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are five, six hands, six raised hands, I'm sorry.
Okay, may I, I need to hear from abutters, so abutters, please keep your hands raised. Everybody else, if we have time, we'll hear from you, but I want direct abutters to speak, please.
Emily?
Uh, I'm, I'm not a direct abutter, just to be clear.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but I, I, yeah.
I'd like to hear from direct abutters.
Alicia, are you a direct abutter?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please put your name and address on the record.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, Alicia McDonald. I live at 16 Everett Street. The developers have demonstrated no hardship, no dimensional constraint, and no financial constraint that prevents them from conforming to the requirements of the three-family sub-district and the Sumner Hill neighborhood design overlay district. A use variance is extraordinary relief and there are no specific situations or conditions that are unique to 8 Everett that justify a use variance.
So hold on, hold on, hold on, please.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're one of the residents in 16 Everett Street who in fact took advantage of some of those relief, the relief, the same relief that these applicants are requesting?
I am not knowledgeable of that history as I was not present during that process.
Yes, so this, this board reviewed that plan for 16 Everett Street. I'm a little disappointed by the way it looks, but it did benefit from the relief of this board very, very closely, mirroring, actually had probably more relief than what this project is requesting. So just to, just to clarify, that in fact, that is the history of 16 Everett? Okay, anybody else who is a direct abutter?
Hi, David, are you a direct abutter?
I am. My name is David Carnahan. I live at 6 Everett Street. I'm a direct abutter to 12 Everett. This large building will go up directly behind my house. As you know, neighborhood opposition to this project has been consistent and strong since last December. People have spoken at community meetings, letters were sent to the developers asking that the project be based on the zoning code. This board now has received, as you know, 50 emails in opposition to the variances. Our abutter statement has over 100 signatures. 52 abutters are opposed to this project. The rest of the board.
Let me just ask you.
Yes.
Um, is this, is this a reaction to the construction of 16 Everett Street?
They're very different projects. We feel, you know, people have a lot of opinions in the neighborhood about 16 Everett. We feel it sits a little large on the street. It's well enough constructed. For other aspects of that, that development was associated with an affordable project down the street. The developer bought both parcels and then sold it at a very low cost to a different developer who is now in the final stages of building eight affordable units. This 16 Everett has 140 feet of frontage along Everett Street. They could have put three houses lined up in a row. The compromise was, do you want three houses in the neighborhood? Or can we arrange it so perhaps the building can be set back? Perhaps there can be a large lawn in front of it. This was part of a community process, you know, two or three years ago. And, and the developers never started at twice the FIR or three times the unit count. That developer started at the maximum and got community buy-in.
Okay, so let me just ask you a second question.
Yes.
How close from the backyard is this to your back wall?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question?
How close is this to your building's rear wall?
The building itself to my rear wall?
The whole project, yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's a fair amount of distance between the building and the rear wall. It may be 25 from my property line.
Okay.
It's 20 from that.
Okay.
We're not pleased that we're going to be looking over asphalt and retaining walls.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Rod, are you a direct abutter?
My name is Rod Fountain.
Rod, are you a direct abutter?
I'm a direct abutter. My name is Rod Fountain. I live at 16 Everett Street. I'm a direct abutter to 12 Everett Street. 12 Everett Street has insufficient frontage for a multifamily and granting the variances would allow a building which negates the purpose of the Sumner Hill neighborhood design overlay district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, anybody else?
Alicia, are you a direct abutter? Gee.
So, um.
Madam Chair, we have a direct abutter seeking to try to get on.
And who is that?
Becky Silverstein.
Mr. Ambassador, can you unmute her?
Sure. Becky, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Becky Silverstein, and I live at 6 Everett Street, just upstairs from my neighbor, my neighbor David, who just spoke. We are in the house divided that Mike referenced. And I, my spouse Naomi and I stand in support of this project, in support of six units instead of three to increase the housing supply in JP. We feel the team has worked with the community to shift the design adequately to make it fit into the visual landscape. And while we are sad to see the loss of the green space that I might have been looking at right now rather than construction, we are heartened to see our neighborhood return to a density that was once here particularly close to the T Station.
Thank you. Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Access density.
Madam Chair, do you want to go back to Regent or do you want to go to the next case?
Can I get a suggestion, a read from Jessica if Regent is ready to go? Is anybody on from ONS who could just be in touch with Jessica and find out what's happening on Regent?
Yes, I'm on the call. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay, yep, so it wasn't very clear if the Thomas Rock Neighborhood Association was and it was near Cashman area. So we did, we did conduct a community process. We do have currently letters of support, but I, you know, defer to the developer to see if he'd like to move forward or he does, he has committed. And speaking of Thomas Rock Neighborhood Association, I've looked them into an email, so I diverted.
Okay, Mr. Vigilio or whoever is representing, Mr. Vigilio, are you proposing to go ahead or touch base with, with the community?
Madam Chair, we're happy to talk with the community. We feel that, you know, that the applicant and owner, Mr. Cochran, you know, made an extensive outreach to his direct abutters garnering the letters of support I believe he received. We feel that, you know, we liaise with the appropriate community in the area and as directed by ONS, we.
Okay, so please, if so, please go ahead then with the merits of the case.
Madam Chair, I need to call it into the record.
Sorry.
That's okay. Give me two seconds here. For the record, calling BOA 109372485, Regent Street. This is, enclose the existing open porches and install new vertical side additions. Extend living, living space to the basement and above the roof. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tom Miller, attorney with McDermott Colton Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. I'm here on behalf of the building owner and resident, John Cochran. I'm joined by architect William Paquette. We're here, we're here before you today because the applicant and owner of the property purchased this to make it his home and an investment for the future. He hired a contractor and consultant to update and renovate the property, but due to a serious and ongoing illness, he wasn't able to supervise them in the way that proved to be necessary. He relied, Mr. Cochran relied on them to do the work legally and appropriately. Apparently, they pulled permits for minor repair work but never pulled the necessary permits to do the scope of work that was proposed. Once Mr. Cochran discovered that they had, you know, they hadn't done things the appropriate way, causing the issues and violations that bring us here today, he hired a new architect, an architecture firm. Mr. Paquette, as I said, is here to discuss the plans as needed. And they reviewed those and fired the contractor and consultant. He's brought on a new contractor and consultant and we're here to correct the record.
Okay, so please, please hold on. Let's, let's just stay at this view. Will Mr., will, will you and Mr. Paquette talk through this so we understand what's being proposed? Or what happened or whatever?
Okay, Madam, Madam Chair, this is William Paquette, and I can describe this for you. On the left, there's a photograph of the building before any of the work that we're talking about today was, was undertaken. And on the right is an existing photograph. This, this is work that has already been done and we're, we're trying to correct the record. We believe that there were some zoning violations. We're trying to, to correct that. As you can see on the, on the right, there is, the addition from the left of the Oriole window was, was constructed to enclose an area of the building that was only two stories. And so they added two stories and, and those porches, the balconies that you see there. You can see the addition was done in, in brick. And if we scroll down to the other two images on that drawing, this is a photograph from another point of view from, from the east. And on the, the left-hand photograph, you can see the right part of the left-hand photograph is, is a two-story building where the addition took place. And the right-hand photograph shows that addition. It also shows the floor that was added on the main part of the building, referred to as a penthouse structure, but it's an occupiable space. So it was, was added to the very roof of the building.
So the proposal today is to enclose those porches, is to legalize the, the penthouse, is, is this my understanding, is to legalize that penthouse and to enclose those open porches?
No, it's not to enclose the porches. It's to legalize the work that has been done to date. It was to legalize what is, what is shown in the photograph on the right. These are three more existing conditions photographed. And it's to legalize what has been built.
Okay, because it says enclose existing open porches and install new vertical side, okay, I see. It's the old, okay?
Part of the pre-existing was, was porch, yes.
And tell us about the extension into the basement?
The, the basement, there were, there are levels. There's actually, there's different levels, but into the basement, it was an, it's an unfinished basement that the owner wishes to extend existing dwelling units into, to enlarge the units. So there's no additional units involved in this work. It's simply making the units larger. So that adds on a certain amount of, of square footage, which incurs a floor-to-air ratio violation. And also the extension of the.
And what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement and what is that living space? Is it bedrooms?
No, in, in units, in Unit 1, it's to be a living area. And I, I don't have a, I don't have a recorded height, but the ceilings are quite high in the existing basements. And Area 2, again, it's a, it's a kitchen and, and other sorts of living space.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Um, well, I guess the drawings are okay. I mean, we have a situation here where work is, this is ex post facto once more and the work is already done. The penthouse unit to the applicant, what is that? I don't see from the, it's not clear to me from the prints. What is that used for? The vertical addition on top?
That, that consists of living space and there's a bathroom. And then it opens out to a, a proposed roof deck.
Okay, so, but the roof deck is not on top. The penthouse opens to it, right, from a?
The penthouse would open to it.
Yeah.
Even there's a photograph of that penthouse. Scroll down one or two more drawings. Right there. It says new roof structure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just space in a bathroom.
I mean, I, you know, Madam Chair, I guess the plans are okay. It's, you know, it's always a question of what do you do with something that they're asking to legalize something that wasn't legal?
So, Mr. Paquette, do you have a rendering of what this new roof structure would look like? Because I'm anticipating that there will be necessary work to bring it to code, et cetera, et cetera?
Uh, Madam Chair, that photograph is the, is the roof structure. It's already been constructed.
Yes, I'm, I'm assuming that there will be treatment to it to bring it up to par because it looks like it is in partial state of design or construction?
Uh, it was part, it was impartial, you're right, the construction was not complete when the photograph was taken.
Okay.
It will be completed.
Okay. Um, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. There was a community process with both myself and my predecessor. The current plans allow for the petitioners to correct previous violations. Violations in our office received 23 letters in support of the project, so we'd like to go on record to support.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project, either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, we have the secretary here. We have no letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Okay, let me raise hands, Ambassador.
Just have two raised hands. You want to go with Connie first?
Connie, sure.
Connie, you're unmuted.
I'm trying to call from Connie.
Connie. Connie.
Speaking.
You have your hand raised. Do you want to speak?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I'm, hi, Connie Forbes here from Garrison Tronner Neighborhood Association and partner of an. So I'm, Connie Forbes here from Garrison Tronner Neighborhood Association and partner of an organization and other neighborhood groups. And we're seeing a cross that has happened before in our communities where things are being built without proper clearance and support. Very concerning for us. This is a project that did not have a community review. They went to individual abutters who may not have understood the zoning and the things that were needed for this project to go forward. And so we always advocate for an informed process with the community involvement and being transparent. That did not seem to have occurred here. So we're retroactively approving, approving something that this is not the only developer who has done this. And in this case, it could have been a mistake or an error. But we've seen intentional misuse of ZBA to approve retroactively projects that have been done outside of the legal cross. And it's very concerning for the entire community. So there doesn't seem to be a consequence, and this is not the first time we've heard of it. We've heard of other projects where an entire floor was being built outside of the zoning guidelines. In this case, the height adding a roof deck, which has always been something that we had concerns about because roof decks in Roxbury have had detrimental impact on the community. So this roof deck, which was adding an extra story to the building, it would probably have not met with the community's approval because it's just, it has issues with roof decks. I'm just going to let that stop because there are other neighborhood groups that were not approached. Not only Tommy's Rock, but we also have other groups. And I'm hoping that the developer does defer until that process happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go on. Mr. Ambassador, any other raised hands? Catherine, you're on muted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go, put your name on the record, and please tell us what your concern is.
This is Catherine Williams. I am representing Tommy's Rock Neighborhood Association today. I just wanted to say that we were not approached by the developer or Jessica Thomas about this particular requirement for community input. There are also two other communities that abut directly to this property, St. Joseph's Cooperative and the Fountain Hill Cooperative. They both should have been excelled. They both have boards with community members on. This should have gone to their board for review as well as to our neighborhood association for review before it was brought to the ZBA. And I, we do.
Okay.
The work that's been done on this.
Okay, so can I, so, thank you, thank you. So it sounds like, go ahead.
Can I just want to make, I want to make two comments quickly. One is.
Who is this?
It's Tom Miller, the attorney. I just want to make two comments quickly. One, John Cochran, the applicant, he's not just the developer. He lives in this building and plans on living in this building for the foreseeable future. This is his home. And, you know, this is his neighborhood. This is where he lives, which is why he made such an effort to reach out to all of the people who live in his immediate area, to speak to them about this project. And to, to be frank, we asked ONS for guidance. We asked them who we needed to speak to, and we were not given, you know.
Okay.
What they asked us to give.
So I just want to also find out, because, you know, as I looked at the plans, it looked like the addition in the scheme of things was essentially squaring off the building. Is that right? Mr. Paquette? And if I look at, let me just see, because it looks as if it has enough side yards so it doesn't affect the abutters for light and air. May I just get that on the record, please? Either Mr. Miller or Mr. Paquette?
Yes, that is correct. I apologize, I didn't realize I was muted.
Okay, okay, so, so this is, so, and the way you've represented it, it was an issue with the contractor that Mr. Cochran, did you say, had hired?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is to clean up a mess that has occurred in a building that the developer lives in?
Yes, he's, I didn't use the word developer because he owns the building and lives in it.
Okay, okay, he's the owner, okay. So given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve. I, at some point, when we're asked to do this after the fact, we need to deny it. But in this, there are enough mitigating circumstances that I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Is all those in favor?
This is Jeff at the VPDA. Could you amend your motion so that it's very specific, that they are not enclosing the porches as was stated?
Well, the work is done. I don't even know what happened.
No, but they're not enclosing the porches. That was my understanding through testimony today.
Correct, we're not going to enclose the porches that you saw in the pictures. The reference in the refusal letter was a different porch that was enclosed previously.
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue, Mr. Hampton, but.
Okay, thank you. No, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay. So it's, there's a motion, there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Joe.
Joe's opposed. Motion carries, so you're all set, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 834-6473 Meyer STREET. There's a companion case, BOA 834-6465 Meyer STREET. The 3 and 5 Meyer STREET both have the same purpose, but they have different violations. So I'm going to do the purpose. On 3 Meyer is erected two-family dwelling. Each unit will have three bedrooms, a two-and-a-half bath, one car garage, unfinished basement for storage and mechanical. One of the two buildings on the lot with eight off-street parking. The front unit will have a finished attic with one bath. Violations, Article 55, Section 9, the side yard isn't sufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard isn't sufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. This is for... I'm sorry, so there is a different, there is, 5 does have one thing different. So I'm going to read it to the record. Building being erected, two-family dwelling, each unit will have three bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths, one car garage, unfinished basement for storage and mechanical. One of the two buildings on the lot will have off-street parking. Violations, Article 55, Section 41.12, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 55, Section 9, lot frontage isn't sufficient. Article 55, Section 9, front yard isn't sufficient. And Article 55, Section 9.3, dimensional location of the main entrance. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Polgeny, 10 Forbes Road in Grandview, on behalf of the applicant, Joe DeSipio. As Mr. Fortune stated, the properties are located at 3 and 5 Meyer STREET in Rosendale. This lot size is 18,658 square feet. The zoning's 2F 5,000, which is 3,000 for the first unit and 2,000 for each additional. The proposal is to raise the existing two-family that currently sits on this property and construct two new two-unit townhouses that would be sold as condos. Each unit would be three-bed, two-and-a-half baths with one car garage located internally. Three units will be approximately 1,688 square feet, and one unit is 1,751 square feet. The violations, as Mr. Fortune wrote out.
Please hold on one second. Ehrlich, can you please give us, show us how the buildings are going to be laid out on the lot? Is where, where is that, Mr. Polgeny? What drawing is that?
Madam Chair, it's going to be a structure behind a structure. I was just going to go through that one, which is the zone.
No, that, but I want to see what it looks like from street view. So go ahead. Okay. I see, okay, go ahead.
So as, I would just talk about the violations on 3 Meyer STREET. Side yard allowed is 10, we're at 9 feet. Rear yard is 20, and we're at 20. Front yard is 15 or modal, and we're at 13. 5 Meyer STREET, we have the violations of two or more units on the same lot. Lot frontage, as we're, as 5 Meyer, as I stated, is behind 3 Meyer. Front yard, as we are behind 3 Meyer. Main entrance does not face the street. As you can see on that plan right there, they make face to the side. And rear yard 20, we're at 13.8. Also, in addition, each townhouse will have a garage, and there are four visitor parking spaces. This proposal went through an extensive community process. We had over four meetings, I think we had four meetings. Very respectable conversations with the abutters. They were always professional and courteous. However, with floor revisions to these plans, Madam Chair, we just couldn't get a consensus and get agreement with the abutters. I included seven letters of support. However, in the attempt, you know, with full disclosure, none of the support letters which I provided the board this afternoon are from contiguous abutters. Some of them are direct abutters, when you say direct, but they're not contiguous abutters. Contiguous abutters are.
Let me just ask you, it looks like there's a change of grade. Does it go down from Meyers to Florian?
It does, Madam Chair. It's a long, kind of narrow lot, very large lot, and it runs from Meyer back, so you can see. So the opposition is.
Let me just ask you again, how does the parking, how does the parking work? Is the access from Florian?
No, no, Madam Chair, it comes in off Meyer STREET. So the parking comes in off Meyer, you can see that lane. It will come down there, this garage, there's one car garage for each one of those townhouses. And then there's, you can see there's parking in the middle for additional parking.
So I see, because of the slope, basically, you've left the rest of the lot open. Okay? Yeah, I, yeah, I could see why, you know, abutting so many residential units could be difficult to get consensus. Okay, and so these are, these are three-bedroom. They range in size from 1,688 to 1,751, and they'll each have one parking space?
Yeah, each one comes with one garage space, Madam Chair, which is zonically planned.
And the basements are unfinished?
That is correct.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, it's Joe Cochran, here with the mayor's office, in a speaking position.
I'm sorry, are you in opposition?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else, anybody else to speak?
Madam Chair, the secretary here, I just, we have 438 signatures and 20 letters of opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of the city council, Andrea Kimble's office. We'd also like to go on record in opposition.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah? I have a lot of raised hands. Okay, is there anybody from the district city council's office?
I think Dustin Gardner just spoke, I believe.
Yes, that was me, Council, from Council Kimble's office, in opposition.
Okay. Right, right, this was the, okay, the, just the district, got it, okay? Okay, so, may I, so, is there anybody in support? Can everybody put their hands down for this, this project, except for people who are in support? Anybody left, Mr. Ambassador? Yes, caller, you're on muted. Are you in support?
Madam Chair, Paul Thelton for council clarity, we're in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so it sounds like there's overwhelming support, opposition on this project?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Pardon?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there anything that you wanted to say for the record? Any additional information for the record?
No, just it was a respectful process and, you know, great neighborhood, but it just didn't work out, so.
Okay. Okay, good old, good try. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion's in, aye, aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. Calling the next case. Calling BOA 1080220, 27 Montclair Avenue. This is an installation of a backyard chicken coop for six chickens. Violation is Article 56, Section 40. Accessory building in the side or rear yard. Article 56, Section 7. The accessory of keeping of animals, poultry is forbidden. And Article 56, Section 8, the rear yard maximum occupancy by accessory buildings cannot exceed 25%. Name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
Miss, Madam Chair and members of the board, this is Francesco Piri, speaking from 27 Montclair Avenue, West Roxbury, Massachusetts.
Okay. So your chicken coop, as I look at your drawing, is proposed to go at the rear of your garage? I, so that's uphill, go. Does your backyard slope down towards center, or is it going uphill towards center?
Madam Chair, the grade slopes down from, from Montclair down towards center. So the garage is sort of on the lower end of the slope.
And I'm assuming you're proposing chickens and not roosters?
Yes, madam, the hens, six hens.
Okay, cool. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich, with your balanced experience with chicken coops?
Well, I guess adequate is probably the best word. Can I just ask a question? How can it be in violation of accessory billing not exceeding 25%? This is a small structure.
This is Jeff Hampton. It's probably because it's attached to the garage, or the garage is already exceeding that 25%?
Oh, so it's not of the dwelling?
No, no, I think it's because the garage that's back there already exceeds that percentage.
Yeah, I mean, it's four, it's four foot by six foot. I mean, we're talking a small.
Yeah, but because it goes back that, you know, four feet or six feet, it just increases that most likely non-conformity already.
Okay.
Okay, and.
By the way, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I know you have seen our recommendation, but we don't need to do any design review on this.
I know, I was a little baffled because all these more substantial projects you deferred, and on the chicken coop, you want review process, review office.
Yeah, we want to make it look Victorian.
Okay. Is.
I would recommend Queen Anne.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, mayor's office, neighborhood services. Just like to go on record in support. We had an abutters meeting back in August, and the neighbors were all supportive. Then went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council at the end of August, and I received their full support. So just like to reiterate their support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have no letters of support, but we have one letter of opposition. The opposition is, they're obviously concerned with bird flu.
With, I'm sorry?
Bird flu.
Oh, avian flu, okay, okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, city council in East Ross Abbe, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Peter Favrito from Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 10558534, Anoan Avenue. There's a companion case with building code, BOA 1055852, holding Anoan Avenue. This is an erected new eight-unit multi-family. This is an erected new eight-unit multifamily dwelling. And combine this lot with an adjacent vacant lot. The violation is Article sixty-seven, Section thirty-two, off-street parking loading. Article sixty-seven, Section eight, eight-family is forbidden. Article sixty-seven, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-seven, Section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-seven, the rear yard isn't sufficient. And for building code, violation is five twenty-one, CMR nine point zero zero, multiple dwellings, Article nine point three. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Attorney John Pulgeni, on behalf of the applicant, Andreas Hong. And I'm joined here today with Travis Blake from Sousa Architects as well. First thing I'd like to do is, we're going to withdraw the appeal of the building code violation. We will comply, if the building code violation is simply that we have adaptable units on the first floor, and that will be done, so if this project is approved by this board, then we could, you could make a recommendation or a motion approval with no building code release. But that is, we are withdrawing that.
So may I have a motion for the, for the one oh five five eight five two? May I have a, may I have a motion?
Motion to deny building code relief.
Motion, no building code relief.
All those in favor, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Is, are there multiple systems open that they're, that we're hearing this echo? John?
Not on my end, Madam Chair.
Okay, so let's proceed with the, with the proposal.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, Way Anoan Avenue is located at the corner of Belgrade Avenue, Rosendale. The zoning in that neighborhood is two F five thousand. This lot size is nine thousand square feet. The proposal is to raise an existing office building and construct, and join it with an adjacent parking lot and construct a new eight-unit condominium building with eight off-street parking spaces. The current use is an office building with an adjoining parking lot. The violations were used, obviously it's multifamily residential in a two-F zone. FAR point five allowed, we're a little over one. Height, we're fine in, we're fine in height, we're just over in stories. It's three and a half, thirty-five feet, two and a half, we're thirty-five, three. Rear yard forty, we're at sixteen eight, and parking is two per dwelling unit because it's Rosendale zoning, and we are one per dwelling unit. The unit sizes are all two bedrooms, two baths. The average size is twelve hundred and thirty-nine square feet. The community process to date, we had a great meeting and support from the members of the Greater Belgrade Neighborhood Association. Very positive, there was no formal vote taken, very positive abutters meeting, which ONS will confirm. I provided the board with five letters of support from the abutters, and also we have a letter of support because we presented this project to the, even though it's in Rosendale, Madam Chair, we, it's through the jurisdiction, the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, and the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council voted to support this proposal, based upon the input of the abutters.
Let me just ask you a couple of questions. What did you say your rear yard requirement was?
Forty.
And I, I know that's kind of excessive, what are you proposing?
Sixteen point eight, right now, which is, I think, less than what's currently there with the office building that sits there.
And I, I...
I mean, more than what the current building, sorry.
More, more than what the current building, but except it's denser. And tell us about your side yards, just to get a sense of your impact on your abutters.
We have no side yard violations, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Square footage, each one, there's a driveway that is circular, you can come in, you can see a car in this picture that's up right now, that comes out, so there's a twelve-foot driveway on either side of that, that separates that from, and then there's also screening and buffering between those as well.
Sorry, were you going to say something?
No, I, I was just going to say that, you know, we had done several abutters meetings and worked with them with respect to dimensional setbacks and things like that, and they were pleased with what the proposal was after those meetings.
Okay. Yes, Colette, thank you for scrolling through. Any basement dwellings?
No, Madam, no, Madam Chair.
And then no roof decks, because this is just not in keeping with this?
That's correct, no roof decks.
Okay, okay, and they're all two-bedroom, no possibility for three beds?
None, two-bedroom, two, two-bath units, family condos.
And the building across the street, Belgrade, are those two bedrooms too?
On, oh, the newer building there, to the right of the Chevy dealership? I, I don't know, Madam Chair, I'm not sure.
You know, I think they are two bedrooms and a small study. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record in support. As John mentioned, there's been a full community process. We had an abutters meeting back in July, which went not very well, the neighbors were supportive. Andreas has worked with the director abutters and the neighbors around the property to hear their concern, to address, you know, address those concerns. Again, as John mentioned, went before the West Roxton Neighborhood Council in August, received their support. So we'd just like to reiterate that support, thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Caitlin Fleischman here, from District Council, Partner Royo's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have four letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Madam Chair, I have one raised hand.
Yes, please go ahead.
Caller, you're unmuted.
Madam Chair, Paul Tholm, on behalf of City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Due to the, the director abutters being on board with the project, Council would go on record in support.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, BPDA design.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed, any opposed? Motion carries, carries.
Thank you, everybody, enjoy your dinner.
Calling the next case.
Calling the next BOA. Mile of a sudden.
Yes, yes, Attorney Joseph Licklau.
Hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second. Hold on two seconds, I haven't called the record yet. I got a bad echo. Give us two seconds.
Mr. Clark, can you try to call it now?
Yep, sounds much better now. All right, calling the next case, calling BOA one zero five four two four three, thirty-eight Cass Street. This is erected two-family dwelling, demolish the existing single-family dwelling. The new address will be known as thirty-eight Cass Street. Violation Article fifty-six, Section seven, a two-family dwelling is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Attorney Joseph Licklau, Fifty Congress Street in Boston, representing the owner and applicant, Brian Keen. There's one violation here, it's a use violation. And the owner proposes to build a two-family on two combined lots of nine thousand eight hundred and forty square feet in a one-F six-thousand zone. The proposed two-family would be two stories, three bedrooms in each of the units, which with parking down under, and there are, there are no other violations except the use violation.
So can we just see what this looks like from a street view?
I mean? No, that's, that's, that's the existing house there from a, a street view. This is a rendering here, and if, if there's a way to turn it so that it, to rotate it, then you would see it from the street. There's also elevations that are attached to the plans.
And is this stick built or is this mod?
It's a stick built.
Colette, can you please go back? Okay, yeah, okay. Is there, I, I don't recall Cass having a slope, does it have a slope?
I do not believe so, or if it does, it's very gentle. I could be, I could be wrong, but I don't think so.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich? Did we lose Mr. Ehrlich?
I apologize, the drawings are adequate.
Hey, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record in support. The advocate went before, or rather, we had the abutters meeting back in July. Majority of neighbors are on board. The property that's currently there is in disrepair, I think they're happy to see the project go forward. It went before the West Roxton Neighborhood Council in August and also received their support, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Peter Favrito from Councilor O'Malley's office. Council would like to go on record in support of the project as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have no letters of support nor letters of opposition.
Okay, um, BPDA, what was your recommendation? Let's see.
Hi, Madam Chair, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We didn't receive any plans and didn't even see the rejection letter from ISD on this.
Okay, because it looks like this could, could benefit from design review. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, BPDA designer view.
Is there a second, is there a second favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any opposed, carries. Jeff, can you just increase, increase, try, try, please? Maybe they, maybe they, a, 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 each other or something.
Over here, over here.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, can, um, do you want me to change the driveways? That what I heard it echoed, so I, I was having a tough time.
I'm sorry, it looks like it's two front doors and two side driveways. I don't know if the, the extent of the driveways can be minimized if they are centered on the building versus, you know, versus the way they're currently laid out.
It'd be interesting to see if they've already gone to BTD, because I know that BTD typically doesn't like issuing two, two curb cuts on the same property.
Yeah, so keep an eye on that, please.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one 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 zero five zero zero, four twenty-one to four twenty-five Market Street. This is a change of occupancy of an existing commercial building to a mixed-use building. Construct four-story addition onto the, onto the existing building. On the ground floor, there'll be retail space and accessory parking. There'll be twenty-three residential units on two floors, two, two-two to thrive, and a common roof deck. There'll be twenty-three parking space garage underneath the building. Violation is Article fifty-one, Section sixteen, a multifamily dwelling is conditional. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the building height is excessive. Article fifty-one, Section seventeen, the rear yard isn't sufficient. Article fifty-one, Section fifty-three, screening and buffering is insufficient. Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. And Article fifty-one, Section fifty-six, off-street parking loading is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with an address of eleven Beacon Street, representing the petitioner, Henry Chen, the owner of the building. And I also have Scott Trineer and Arthur Chu as the architects on this call as well. As was mentioned, the proposal is to erect a four-story addition on top of an existing commercial space, a former bank building, and to change the occupancy of the building to... Round floor retail space, twenty-three residential units, and twenty-three interior parking spaces. This project was approved by the BPDA Article eighty process and board in August of 2020. This particular zoning sub-district is an NS one, so neighborhood shopping. The unit breakdowns, which I will go over, there are four studio units at five hundred and seventy-nine to six hundred and ninety-three square feet, four one-bedroom units at seven hundred and sixty square feet, thirteen two-bedroom units at nine hundred and eleven to a thousand seventy square foot range, and two three-bedroom units at eleven hundred and one to eleven hundred and forty-five square feet. I'm going to go over the four...
Sorry, how many, how many two-bedrooms?
There is thirteen two-bedrooms, Madam Chair, and they range from nine hundred and eleven to a thousand seventy square feet. And there are two three-bedrooms as well, that are eleven hundred to eleven forty-five. The layout of the building, because we're keeping the structure, the entrance is not on Market, so it's in the back through a common passageway on Lyce Street. I am working with the BPDA, they wanted to keep traffic off of Market Street as much as possible. So this, the basement level would house sixteen parking spaces, which is shown here. Sprinkler room, mechanical storage room, bike room, and then, I'm sorry, mechanical storage room. When we go up to the first floor, there would be an additional seven parking spaces, so total twenty-three parking spaces on site. A retail space at eleven hundred and eighty-nine square feet. A bike room that would house thirty bicycle spaces, meter room, residential lobby, track room, and elevator. The second, third, fourth, and fifth floor all have six units. Just to point out, there was a common roof deck, and working with the community, that was removed. There are now two private exclusive roof decks with, accessed by hatch. And there is one stairwell required by the building code because it is a five-story building. The fifth floor is also recessed twelve feet, one inches from the street, so it's got a front pullback with additional decks on that front pullback space. The violations, as we mentioned, I can go over those. The area is NF, NS one, so MFR is a conditional use, so the retail will be allowed, but the MFR is conditional. FAR, we're at three point seven five and one point oh, that's allowed. The height is at fifty-three feet, three inches, thirty-five is what's allowed. The rear yard is existing violation because we're leaving the building, that's eight foot one, but twenty would be required. Parking, we have twenty-three spaces and forty-six would be required, plus an additional for the retail. And we do not have a loading day on this project. I cannot pause to answer any questions that the board may have.
I'm sorry, so can you backtrack and talk about, did you say there were roof decks or not roof decks?
So there, yeah, originally it was a common roof deck, that's why, as mentioned, these updated plans show that that common one was removed, and if we, if you want to go back, Madam Ambassador, there is a roof plan. It just has two exclusive roof decks right there, each of which two hundred and forty square foot and two hundred and thirty-two. Those have a walking path to a stairwell, but they are accessed by hatch.
Okay, and how many stories is this?
This is five, fifty-three feet, right.
So is this taller than the stories across the street where the pharmacy used to be?
Yeah, that, that historic building right directly across from us, that's about forty-five feet, forty-six feet, and I...
You're fifty-three, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. Mr. Drago, the, how are the parking spaces going to be divided between commercial and residential use?
So they would all be for the residential use to go exclusively with the building.
So anyone who's coming for a commercial space would be street parking?
Yeah, it would be more of a walking traffic, and in meeting with the community, they wanted us to keep some commercial elements, so we're thinking like yoga studio, bakery, something more for the residents that live there.
Okay, and then my second question was on eight-two-one, the elevation. You said that, that the roof decks are accessed by hatch, but I, I show headhouse in the drawings.
Is that a mistake? Oh, so there's the one head, there's the one stairwell required by code in the back, but they are accessed by head, they're each accessed by a hatch, but there has to be a stairwell in the back required by code.
Okay, and is there an elevator in the building?
There is, and there's an elevator shaft on top.
Okay, so there's... Okay, so there's, so there are two structures, so there's two hatches and stairwell, headhouse and elevator headhouse.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, if nobody else is taking the lead here. We have 89 letters of support and one letter of opposition.
And what's the opposition based on?
It sounds like it's in a butter of an individual that own the property right next door to this, and they're concerned about, obviously, traffic and the same passageway that work is going to be going on.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have two, seven raised hands.
Okay, may I hear from the mayor's office and elected officials first?
Do you know the counselor in the mayor's office who are supporting? Not sure where they are.
Hold on. Connor? Connor?
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead, we can hear you.
Excellent, sorry about that. I'm calling in for the first time. Connor Newman with the mayor's office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go in support of this proposal. They went through the BPDA community process. We think it's an exciting opportunity for Brighton Center. They also received support from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. We are aware of concerns from one resident. We were told by the applicant that they are working with them to address some of the concerns regarding the easement in the rear. We feel confident that this is a good proposal. Thank you.
I have Counselor Breeden's office on the phone as well.
Good afternoon, this is Maureen McCray from Counselor Breeden's office. Counselor Breeden would like to go on record as being in support of this project.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor Savi George's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is Annabelle Gomes on this?
She is.
Okay, may I hear from Annabelle, please?
Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support of the project. The developer has worked with the budding neighbors on their concerns. They've addressed them. And we do feel that this is a good opportunity to have more people living in Brighton Center, which will support the businesses as well. Thank you.
And may I hear from the Butter? If the Butter is on this, on this meeting?
Bill Wright, are you in a butter?
No, I'm not. I'm a local, right around the corner, a neighbor, business owner.
Okay, thanks. Madam, hold on. Susan? Susan? Ms. Rufo, can you hear me? Madam Chair, she's not responding.
Okay, she was opposed to the project across the street. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor, in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
I will go on record in opposition, because when I, because when I we had in mind. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next case?
I'm thinking about it, yes. Next case.
Who's thinking about what?
I'm thinking about the next case. BOA 108-6727, 365 Western Avenue. This erect a new six-story, 65-unit multifamily dwelling with 27 to 37 stackers at grade, parking spaces and a common roof deck. The violation is Article 29, Section 4, this is in the G-Pod applicability. This Article 51, Section 16, a multifamily dwelling use is conditional. Article 51, Section 17, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 17, the building height is excessive. And Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Lacass, Lacass Law LLC, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. Attorney for the applicant Joe Hassel, doing business as Boston Real Estate Capital. This is 365 Western Ave, which is at the corner of Telford Street. It's currently a one-story car wash building, 15,000 square foot lot. And the proposal is to raise the existing structure and to construct a new six-story building with 65 residential units with parking at grade. This project has gone through the Article 80 Small Project Review Process with the BPDA, including the public review required therewith. And I submitted to the record the BPDA Board Approval Memo.
So please tell us the number of units, the breakdown, one bedrooms, square footage, and how many are, how many are going to be affordable? And please tell us why there's no off-street loading proposed?
Yes, Madam Chair. The unit breakdown is as follows. There are 30 studio units, 450 square feet, 25 one-bedroom units of 650 square feet, and 10 two-bedroom units that range in size between 850 to 950 square feet. There are 10 IDP units, which represents 15% of the total of the units. And that breakdown is five studios, three one-bedrooms, and two two-bedrooms, which is consistent with the general mix of the building. There is bike storage for 100 spaces, because this is part of a planning study for Western Ave right now. And there are certain design guidelines and principles that are being articulated in the Western Ave corridor study. And working with the BPDA staff during this process, the plan principles that are, that are part of the Western Ave corridor study have been incorporated into this building, including the bike storage, for example. Parking is 27 spaces or 37 spaces with the stackers, which, again, the parking ratio is consistent with the planning study principles. There is no citation in the zoning code refusal letter for off-street loading requirements that was cited.
It does say off-street parking and loading requirements. And so, let's just see.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's the code section, but then in the comments, it says off-street parking is insufficient.
So where is loading going to occur and how is loading going to occur?
I believe there is space within the garage area, although the project proponent is on the call. And if the ambassador can unmute Joe Hassel, he could address that question.
Unmute it.
Okay, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Yes, Mark was correct in his assumption that the loading will occur through the
Tell us, tell us which drawing we should be looking at to see where the loading will occur?
Right here, next to the, it's the floor plan, the first floor plan, which is on the left of the screen right now. And it's to the left of the lobby. That area right there is where the garage is, and there's sort of room to load in there.
So it would be, I cannot see the drawing, but, so it's going to basically be unloading from the driveway? Is that how it's going to work?
Yep, the driveway and the garage entrance. And then Telford is a, for any overflow, Telford is a side street that does not have parking on either side of it.
Honestly, these projects should stand on their own, on their own two feet, because it looks, well, it looks like you actually cannot afford all those parking spaces, because I don't know how loading is going to occur. And so this is a CC1, so what is the FAR proposed for this?
The FAR, Madam Chair, is 3.2.
3.2?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask the BPDA a question, Jeff?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Jeff, you know, Western Ave has seen a lot of, a lot of construction, as has Brighton as a whole, Alston, Brighton, because Western Ave, beginning from the, from where Market Street comes over, has seen a lot of construction. How many three bedrooms? Because it looks like we're in Brighton all over, just seeing ones and twos going up and very few threes. And a lot, and like, for example, this building has a lot of studios in it. What, what, what is the vision for the community that's been articulated by the community or that the BPDA has solicited from the community as far as if they want to see more of these, you know, these temporary dwellers in the community who live in studios and one-bedrooms versus more permanent residents in the community?
Well, I personally have not been involved with the planning of the Western Ave corridor. That is something that I can get an email to you within the next day or so. And I can talk to, Gerald has been working out there diligently on the Western Ave planning. And so has, like, Rosa and Kenan Rhine. So that's something that I can get for you. I have not been involved in this at all, so I
Yeah, because, because I just, I just don't know if, you know, has an analysis been done on the carrying capacity? Because all these projects come in with insufficient parking. They come in with small units. And, you know, it's all over the city where people say, oh, yes, you know, we are a five-minute walk to X, Y, and Z bus or X, Y, and Z subway. And we know in a normal day, X, Y, and Z subway is already at capacity. So I don't know what it means by being transit-oriented when your transit is already beyond capacity. So I put this out there for the BPDA to just, you know, put it in their pipe and think about it, because, you know, it feels to me that every Article 80 project goes to some level of review. But I don't know, you know, how it looks like, what it looks like as far as the capacity of the community. So I just put it out there. So any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, if I, I would just want to reiterate what you said, because frankly, the design looks like a college dormitory. And it doesn't look like a, when I hear the representative, elected officials from Alston, Brighton, or the neighborhood groups talk about the need for more family-oriented development, this seems to be flying in the face of that direction. It's, it looks like a college dorm, and that's who it would attract.
Yep.
So I'm curious as to what the position of the electives is when we get that testimony.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, this is, good afternoon, this is Maureen McCray from Counselor Breeden's office. Counselor Breeden would like to go on record as being in support of this project because of the range of AMIs that are available for the IDP units. In regards to your question about the number of three bedrooms being produced, we've recently done an analysis of, this is only for Alston. We recently did an analysis of all the BPDA reviewed residential projects in Alston from 2011 to now. And we've found so far, just through the information that's available publicly, that only 26 three-bedroom units were produced.
And out of a total of how many units?
3,075.
What? Not even 10%?
No, I mean, that is, I will say, just note that not all the unit mixes were available for every single project, but that, that is for the majority of, the data was available for the majority of projects.
So, I mean, that's pretty telling, because it speaks about a vision for, for, you know, a couples or singles, essentially, and not for families, families in the community. Interesting. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Secretary here.
Sorry. Were you speaking, Mark?
I was. Secretary here, there's no letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, calling with the mayor's office, Neighborhood Services, sorry, having problems with calling in the phone. We would like to go on record support. These guys went to the Austin Civic Association, received support from the ACA. And as someone who's been involved with the Western Ave corridor study, you know, we're taking into account transportation improvements and whatnot. This project was allowed to go forward because it's on a smaller scale than some of the other ones proposed, such as the Boston Skating Club proposal through the Davis Companies. You know, I understand, Madam Chair, your concerns regarding, you know, the smaller bedroom counts. For the most part, I think this, this particular location, you know, it's advertised with the affordability of more workforce housing for younger folks to free up existing housing stock that exists in the neighborhood right now. You know, a lot of three bedrooms are occupied by, you know, three young professionals. I've lived in that situation myself. So I think the thinking is by attracting these newer buildings, we're going to be freeing up the existing structures and making it more accessible to families.
Sorry, there's, there's an issue that I think needs to be addressed citywide, is that we assume there's going to be a trickle-down or trickle-something. But the fact of the matter is that this price point will be very different from a 60-year-old or 100-year-old house with three bedrooms in it. The price point will be very different. So I think we're fooling ourselves if we think that that's in fact what's going to happen. Because unless and until these price points drop, we're just going to see, I don't think we're going to see what we want to see happen in these communities. But I'll just put that on the record. Let's hear if anybody else is in support or in opposition.
Madam Chair, just for the record, the BPDA memo, which I submitted for the record, has all of the comments in support of the project that we're submitting.
Okay, hold on, I'm just, I'm out here. Is Tony DeZidora on this call? Somebody from ACA on this call? Anybody else with raised hands?
Yes, Annabelle.
Annabelle, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record against this project. We voted against it. We share some of the concerns that the chair has spoken about. We also are very concerned about the percentage of parking and the fact that they may have a bus lane, which will reduce even more street parking in the future. And also, the Western Ave corridor plan is not complete as well. We did ask for a higher percentage in affordable units as well. We did not get that either, so we cannot go on record in support. Thank you.
Counselor Flaherty's office has his hand raised, but I'm not sure if he wants to comment. It's been raised for a while. Hi, did you want to comment?
Yeah, just briefly, just echoing the sentiments of Counselor Breeden's office, counseling to on record in support, Counselor Flaherty's office.
Thank you. Anybody else to go on the record on this project? Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm opposed to the motion. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
Deny, deny.
Is that without prejudice, Mr. Ehrlich?
Deny means we just don't want to see it as it is. It can come back in a direction within a year. Deny is that we just don't want to see it as is. Is there a second? Is there a second? There's a second to it.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the last case for 1 o'clock, calling BOA 102-3110-9 Newton Street. This is to demolish the existing one-story commercial building and erect a new three-story residential building of six units with accessory parking at lower level, possibly below grade. Violation of Article 51, Section 9, insufficient lot size. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient additional square, square foot for a unit. Article 51, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient little space. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient side yacht setback. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient rear yacht setback. Article 51, Section 9, three stories is the max. Article 51, Section 9, 35 feet is the max. Article 51, Section 56, insufficient parking. And Article 51, Section 8, an MFR in a six dwelling is forbidden. Name and address, full the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Miller from Dermot Quotey and Miller, 28 State Street, Boston. I am joined today by David O'Sullivan, the architect for the project. And as well as Jim Boostress of Boostress Properties, the project developer. The project before you today is to replace the existing non-conforming repair garage that has existed at the property with a three-story residential building with ground level parking for eight cars and six units above. That has been designed to keep with character the neighborhood. As you can see from the pictures on the screen, it has the Manfred-style roof, which is, and clapboard siding, which is similar to those in the buildings around it. This project has been through an extensive community process since December of last year, resulting in substantial changes to this project, really reflecting the requests of the community. We reduced the overall building height. It was originally proposed as a 45-foot four-story building. We've now brought it down to a zoning compliance, 32 feet and three stories, as you, as is reflected on the pictures you see there. We've also reduced the overall FAR thereby from 2.65 to 1.78, dropped the total bedroom count by two. We did increase the off-street parking through this process from seven to eight spaces. And after consulting with the BIA, we pulled the building back six feet from the street, which is not necessarily reflected in that picture. That has the previous four-foot setback. So it has pulled back a little bit.
So, so let me just, let me ask a couple of questions. So is pulling it back, does it mean you meet modal front yard?
No, we're still not modal. We are a step in from the building, which you can see beyond ours at the corner of Brook Street, which is right on the property line. We're a step back from that to the buildings along the street.
Okay, and then tell us how parking is going to work. Is that two curb cuts that I see?
No, it is not. What you see is a single curb cut, most closest to you in that, in the left-hand picture, that other space is the entrance to the building. That, it's a single curb cut with the garage actually pulled back so cars can enter and exit without having to wait on the street. You know, not impeding the flow of traffic.
Okay, how, so hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Not very detailed, but they're adequate.
Okay. Is, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling you with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. As Yapkin mentioned, we conducted three developers' meetings through our office. One on December 3rd, one on March 10th, and most recently on September 23rd. Yapkin through that process, listened to neighbors and made reductions in the number of units, increased off-street parking. And I think the primary issue that was brought up by some of the director partners on the 23rd was they were looking for that building to be pulled back further. They had pulled it back further. They also worked with the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, received their support as well. You know, we think this is an opportune transition from a commercial property that, you know, has a lot of, of traffic in and out to more of a residential component that fits in with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Maura McRae from Counselor Breeden's office. Counselor Breeden would like to go on record in support of this project. We appreciate the time the developer has taken to work with the community and incorporate community feedback into the project's design.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor Savi George's office, would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you, and good night.
At least somebody's done.
Flaherty's office. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have no letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Okay.
So I know, sorry, Madam Chair, we, we received three letters. I know we forwarded them to the company earlier today. I'm not going to reach you guys, though.
They might not need the files. So may I have a motion, please?
Annabelle, do you want her, do you want us to hear from her or?
Uh, yeah, Annabelle, please go on the record.
Sure. Madam Chair, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support with their agreement that they will set it back two more feet from what they had already pulled it back from. And BPDA design review. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, those are really interesting houses in that part of the neighborhood. So make sure it meets modal and it's reflective of the community. Thank you. Good luck.
Madam Chair, I'm going to call the interpretation. So I'm going to call them all into the record, and I'm going to say what the purpose is. Obviously, we all know what the purpose is, so I'm going to call all of them in, and they all have the same purpose. Calling case BOA 110-7085, 1001 Boylston Street. There are four companions, case BOA 110-7095, case BOA 110-799, BOA 110-7100, and case BOA 110-7103. Madam Chair, the petitioner seeks a determination and inspectional services to air in issuing the permit. And that's on all of these cases. Name and address for the record. I don't know, Madam Chair, you want to take it from there?
So let me, let me take it from there. Is there an attorney who represents a number of these, of these applicants? Is there one attorney that represents two or three or perhaps all of these applicants?
Madam Chair, I have Benjamin and Jill.
I'm sorry?
I have attorney, well, attorney Jill Miksel, who I just made panelist, and Benjamin Timman.
Okay, so please put your name, Jill, on the record.
Hi, my name is Jill Miksel. I'm from the law firm of Cucutis and Bluestein. I represent the Elliott Hotel, which is located at 370 Commonwealth Avenue.
Okay, so what, the Elliott Hotel goes as Kensington Newbury?
Um, so there are three, there are three different councils who represent.
I want to know who you will represent. Are they KRT Holdings? Who are they?
The Elliott Hotel.
I know, but who, who do they come in as? KRT Holdings, Kensington Newbury Street, or Arthur Ullian?
Arthur Ullian. Arthur Ullian, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so let me know who represents, who, who the other attorneys represent.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. This is Benjamin Timman from Timman, Davis &amp; Duffy. I represent the petitioners Paul Lewis and Sean Dougherty of 360 Newbury Street.
I'm sorry, and your name again?
Benjamin Timman, Madam Chair.
Okay. And, okay, and then let's find out the last person who represents, the last two people representing KRT Holdings and Kensington Newbury.
Your Honor, I don't know whether Attorney Butters, Thomas Butters from Butters Brazilian, represents those petitioners. And I know he was attempting to, to log on.
He's been, he's on, and I made him a panelist, but for some reason, it's not working.
Butters, can you put your name and address on the record and tell us who you're representing?
He's unmuted. Thomas, you're unmuted. You're unmuted.
Okay, I think I'm on, okay.
The video is on too.
Hi. I'm sorry, Thomas Butters.
And who are you representing? And your, your address, please? Mr. Bartlett, can you?
I was on the, the phone, listening, but now I'm on the video. Sorry.
Please tell us who you're representing and what your address is.
Present the, the two Kensington.
Okay, the KRT Holdings and Kensington Newbury, okay? So now that I have all those guys on the record, I want to know who's representing 1001 Boylston Street.
Madam Chair, he's having connection issues right now.
Yeah, but I need to go on. I just need to know.
My name is Sarah Paul.
Who's representing 1001 Boylston Street?
Madam Chair, this is Kevin O'Flaherty. I'm representing the developer of the project, which has an address of 1001 Boylston Street. S&amp;A B12 Property LLC.
Okay.
I'm at Coulson &amp; Stores, 400 Atlantic Avenue, Boston, Mass.
Okay, now, for those of you who have not been here on these projects, I just want to make sure that I get the process done clearly. I will hear from whatever you need to put on the record from each of the attorneys who have requested this interpretation. I will hear from the attorney representing the property owner. I will not hear from anybody else. You will put on the, on the record, the, and please try not to be repetitive. Each one of you, Jill, Ben, or Thomas, please try not to be repetitive. Give me new information. And if there's any information that needs to be submitted, I need that submitted to this office by Friday of this week. Okay? So let's go. I, which one of you attorneys want to go first?
Madam Chair, this is Attorney Timman. Thank you very much. The way that we plan to present on the petitioner's side today is that Attorney Brenner Miksel and I will be dividing the issues. We're not going to speak to the same issues. You'll be happy to hear. I'm going to be speaking to the issues having to do with height, square footage, and linkage fees. And for the most part, Attorney Miksel will be speaking about the preliminary adequacy determination as well as the director, BPDA Director's certificate of compliance and consistency.
Okay.
So, Your Honor, Madam Chair, rather, I do plan and hope that we would have the assistance to put up on the screen some of the materials that have been submitted by the BPDA. They submitted a two-volume administrative record.
So what, what I'd like you to do is not rely on all this stuff, because we did go through all of this. I just want you to summarize everything. And then I need to determine whether some of this information that you're requesting from us is in fact an appeal to us, or if it's an appeal to some other board, because we do not necessarily rule on BPDA documents. But please, so since we're starting off with height and square footage, please get on the record what it is you need to do so. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to start, Madam Chair, we are here under Section 8 of the Boston Zoning Enabling Act, and specifically under that part of Section 8 that allows for any person aggrieved by reason of an order or decision of the building commissioner in violation of any provision of the state building code or any zoning regulation or amendment thereof. And so that's why we're here. We're challenging the building permit that was issued on July 2nd by ISD for the construction of this $700 million, 650,000 square foot or so project. At least that's what it was approved for.
So, so it was approved for 650,000 square foot? What, what are the details of the, of the development?
So 657,000 square feet is the approved amount. And the reason that we're here today, Madam Chair, primarily has to do with the height of, of the buildings. And so the layout of the project, and certainly Developers Council, I'm sure will lay some of this out as well, in the main involves a 20-story office building, a 16, I'm sorry, a 14-story hotel, and then a civic plaza, as it's described, that is in between those two buildings. I would point out that the, the project does not produce a single unit of housing, let alone affordable housing.
So let me, let me ask a couple of questions. Altogether, how many, is this equal or not equal to an acre?
Well, the civic plaza is 3/4 of an acre, roughly, or I'm, I'm sorry, it's closer to 2/3 of an acre, the civic plaza portion. And, and then as far as the, you know, area of the two buildings, 657,000 square feet, I would have to do the math if, if you're asking what that works out to in acreage. But certainly, the overall.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is that, is whether this was approved as a PDA? Because if it, if it was approved as a PDA, then it will not be a project that comes before this board. A PDA is approved and reviewed completely and wholly by the BPDA.
I understand, Madam Chair, that, that planned development areas are subject to, to first BPDA review and then Boston Zoning Commission review, and then are appealable. And we, and we are pursuing that appeal in Suffolk Superior Court. I would point out that the BPDA and the BZC and the developer have taken the position that the BPDA approval of this project is essentially unreviewable in Superior Court. And therefore, and I believe, I could be corrected, but I believe that it's somewhere along the way, it's been cited by our opponents, that you have a different forum for, for having review of the BPDA decisions, namely through the building permit process. I would, I would take issue respectfully, Madam Chair, and, and actually seek your further comment on this, if you wish to make it, regarding building permits. Because while there was indeed a planned development area approved for this project, it, like every other, you know, project, did require a building permit from ISD. And clearly, under Section 8 of the Zoning Enabling Act, building permits are appealable to, to this board, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And Your Honor, Madam Chair, and I, hopefully I won't do that too many more times. I'm used to being in court, as you can see. Hopefully, we'll be able to persuade this board that, first of all, yes, you do have jurisdiction. And secondly, that the reason you have it is that we're challenging the building permit. And so specifically, our claim with respect to the building permit is that the building permit approved building heights that are substantially taller than what the BPDA approved. And so the BPDA in the planned development area approved certain heights. The application went in for the building permit at greater heights, which is what I would, you know, like the opportunity to elaborate upon if I could. And that's, that is one of the, and probably the primary basis of our building permit challenge, which respectfully, I do believe falls within the ZBA's jurisdiction.
So what I'm going to tell you right up front is that we are very likely going to refer this, because this is what we generally do, is refer this to our law department. So what I'd like you to do is map out for me in clear, black and white terms
Sure.
what was approved under the BPDA.
Yes.
And what was filed for at the building department that, that triggered this, both in terms of height and in terms of square footage.
Okay, thank you.
I think the linkage, the adequacy, and the certificate of compliance, then, you know, that triggers a whole different process. So at least, as a bare minimum, will you please put that on the record?
As far as, as far as that first set of issues, Madam Chair, as opposed to the linkage and the adequacy? Okay, thank you. So, and I'm going to make some citations to the record for your and your colleagues, you know, being able to, to check that once the hearing has concluded. So in November of 2018, the. So in November of 2018, the applicant submitted an EPNF to the BPDA. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because that had a version of the buildings, and this is going to be important to our discussion, that were 237 feet tall for an office building and 154 feet tall for the hotel. Now, that is at page.
I'm sorry, what was the hotel again?
154.
Okay.
So that was at the EPNF stage, and that can be found on page 18, 1-8, of the EPNF, which is number 19 in volume 2 of the administrative record.
Okay.
Do you want me to give any PDF page numbers? Is that how any board numbers?
That would help.
Okay. So that is page 2,072 of the PDF.
Okay.
Which is volume 2 of the record. So that shows, that shows version 1 of the project in the fall and late part of the year in 2018. Now, in March of 2019, the developer announced a major revision to the project. That should have triggered what's called a project change process under Section 80A6 in the code. It did not. The developer described it at a CAC meeting as a, quote, "radical change," which material changes to projects are supposed to go through a project change review under the code. This one did not. That raised, that did a few things. It added a, the civic plaza that I mentioned, which is the approximately two-third acre, quote-unquote, "public gathering place," that is how the developers described it. Now, at the time, in my representation of Mr. Lewis and Dr. Doherty, we raised that issue and said, well, you know, where are the pedestrian trip numbers associated with this new public gathering?
But let's go back and let's keep the focus on the height.
Absolutely. Yes, I will do that.
Because that's what you've raised, is the height and the square footage.
Thank you, I will do that. So in that radically revised project of spring of 2019, the heights were raised accordingly. The office tower was increased to a height of 298 feet. So that was a 26% increase over the prior version. And the hotel was ticked upwards a bit to 158 feet.
Okay.
So again, important to note that the hotel, I'm sorry, the office building was increased by 26% in height at that time. Now, that does become pertinent to some of the other issues we've raised, because.
So let me hold on a minute. So when it went to the EPNF, it was 237 office, 154 hotel. When it went to the CAC in the spring of 2019, the height increase, was that height increase ever approved by the BPDA board?
It was, yes.
Okay, when was it approved by the BPDA board?
It was approved on August 15th, 2019. And I hope I have that year correct. I do, yes. August 15th, 2019, it was approved by the BPDA board at those heights. And that can be found, Madam Chair, in the BPDA board memo in volume 1 of the administrative record, number 8, page 4, which is PDF page 111. That's where you'll see a description of the heights. Now, in the DPIR, which was filed in March of, I'm sorry, in April of 2019, there's an important table that I would bring the board's attention to. That is located, the DPIR itself, which as you know is a voluminous document, that's number 17 in volume 2 of the administrative record. And, let's see, the, bear with me one minute, if you would. The project description there is on page 1-8, Table 1-1, which is PDF page 213 of the, of that PDF. So on that page, you'll see, when you look at it, a table that shows that 298 feet high for the office building translated to 20 stories, and 158 translated to 14 stories for the hotel.
Okay.
Now, I would further then like to bring your attention, if I might, because this is, this is, I'm going to talk just very briefly about wind and glare, but in the context of height, because it's important to the other issues.
All I want to do is talk about height, and what I need to do is find out then.
Yes.
Because it seems that everything went through a legitimate process up till now. What was the permit pulled for then, if you are questioning the height?
Yes, absolutely, yes. Right, okay. So now we get to, we get to the building permit application materials. And this is where I need to refer to the plans and drawings that were submitted. Counsel for the BPDA, attorney Chaconi, and I, late last week, each asked Ms. Haynes whether we needed to submit these also quite voluminous set of plans and drawings. I'm not certain whether these are yet in your record, but we will make sure that they are put there by this Friday. But I'm going to refer to certain page numbers in the plans to go over this issue of what the, what the building permit proposal height was. So on page 896 of the Samuels &amp; Company Building Permit Application, which is Plan Number A as in Alpha, 2051, Set 2, there is an elevation drawing of the hotel. And what that indicates is that at the very top of the hotel, the top of the hotel roof is an elevation of 208 feet. And we have to subtract from that 30.4 feet, which is the average street level elevation. That gives us an overall height of 177.6 feet, which is 12% higher than the 158 feet that was approved by the BPDA. Now, what the developer will undoubtedly argue is that that additional height.
Just argue what you need to argue, don't anticipate, okay?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Now, on the office side, that shot up as well. So if you, if you look at, let's pull the plan up here. If you look at page 206 from those plans and drawings that were submitted by the developer to ISD for the building permit, 206, which is Plan Number Alpha 2050, Set 1, that one indicates an upper height to the top of the office tower roof of 353 feet. You subtract, again, the 30.4 feet of ground level elevation to get 322.6 feet, which is, as you know, as you can see, a 24-foot increase over what was approved by the BPDA, which is an 8.3% increase over what the BPDA approved.
Okay.
These, and.
So, so, hold on. Tell me what this then, because you will be speaking to height and square footage. So what, what are you, how is this translating into square footage?
Right. Well, so we, so we don't really know, because the, there's an incongruity here, because the building permit does say, does have that 657,000 square foot figure, but it's clear that when you add 12% in building height to one building and 8.3 to another, that the square footage, you know, is naturally going to go up, and there's certainly no indication that it's been borrowed from someplace else, even if it had been, of course, that wouldn't address the height problem. So, so we actually don't have the overall square footage number. We did, there is a document in the record relating to fire suppression analysis that had an overall square footage number that well exceeded the 657, but I'm not certain that that calculation was correct either.
Okay.
Really, our square footage, our square footage argument, I think just to simplify it, Madam Chair, our square footage argument is tied to our height argument.
Yes, so it's basically arguing that it's, it's going to parallel the change in height, the percentage in the change in height.
That's right. Now, Madam Chair, as just my, if I might, just my final point on height, because this is important. So the development plan approval for the PDA had some language that was a reference to Article 2A of the Code's definition of height, which I'm sure as the board is well aware, because it sounds like even in many of the cases today, you were dealing with rooftop structures. It gives certain exceptions for rooftop structures. If you, if the board were to look at, again, Plan Page 777, which is the office top floor plan, Plan Number SC Sierra Charlie 108A, it will see a floor plan of the supposed structures on, atop the roof. And then for the hotel, if the board were to refer to Plan Page 1236, 1236, and that is Plan Number Sierra Charlie 1005C, that has the hotel layout, where there are large amenity spaces and the like. Now, as the board may be aware, under the building height definition under 2A, it does permit rooftop structures that take up no more than 33% of the overall roof area, which the developer's engineer, in his affidavit at paragraph 21, affidavit of Kevin Lennon, says is 10,666 square feet. Now, just by, just by, you know, a cursory review, not even, you know, the board, I think, just need to make a cursory review of those two, last two plans that I mentioned, to see that the rooftop structures that are, that are populating what appears to be most of the hotel roof cannot, by any stretch that I'm able to discern, and I'm not a math person, but fit within that 33% loophole. And the same with the office building, although there's much more going on at the top of the hotel. I'd also refer the board to Plan Number 434 in the architectural plans. That's Set 1, Plan Number S's in Sierra, triple zero, which has a rendering of an axonometric view rendering of these buildings, where you can see what, you know, a little bit more what's supposed to be going on at the upper floor. We would contend two things. First, that these rooftop structures do not meet the definitions of, of building height exceptions under Section 2A of the definitions of the code, which, for example, talk about structures that are not normally designed to be used for human occupancy, and yet some of the large spaces there appear to be, they're called amenity spaces, which appear to be, you know, clearly used for human occupancy. So we don't believe that this additional height, that I've talked about, the 12% higher and the 8% higher, fits within, by any stretch, the definition of building height under 2A. Further, the second point I would make on that, Madam Chair, is that if, in fact, they do meet the 33%, they should have to show us. They haven't done the math, we've seen no analysis whatsoever of how they think they meet that 33%, either numerically or definitionally, in terms of the types of structures that are permitted. So that is really our case on height.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you very much.
So I will not listen to linkage. Did, I will not listen to certificate of compliance and consistency or the adequacy. Was there anything else that, that the team needed to talk about? Either, you know, the representative, Ms. Meixel or Mr. Butters? Was there anything else beyond this core issue of height and square foot?
Madam Chair.
I don't have anything, this is Butters, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. How about Ms. Meixel?
Madam Chair, I was prepared to address the deficiencies in the preliminary adequacy determination.
Oh, Jill, is that you?
This is me, can you see me?
Yes, I can. Oh, I didn't, I didn't recognize your last name. Okay.
Oh, that's okay. No worries. So I was prepared to address the deficiencies in the issuance of the preliminary adequacy determination, if you would be willing to hear me on that.
We will not hear that, because I'm just going to limit our focus on the elements of the hearing today on the height and square footage. Because, I mean, that is what triggers the issuance of the building permit. So, so please, everybody, stay on. I neglected to ask if there was anybody on representing ISD.
Yes, Madam Chair. Lisa Hong and Chris English.
I'm sorry, Lisa and?
Lisa Hong and Chris English, the Chief of Staff, and.
Lisa and Chris, okay. May I hear now from Ms. Flaherty, representing the owners of 1001 Boylston Street?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I will take your admonition and try to address the height issue, which seems to be the one that we're focused on. What is important, I think, for the board to understand with respect to that is a little background about how this building permit gets issued in a PDA case. A PDA case, as you know, Madam Chair, doesn't come through the typical building permit process. There's a huge run-up to the building permit in a PDA case, and in this case, that was exactly what happened. Two years of review by the BPDA in, under Article 80. The BZC then enacts a zoning amendment, so there's a legislative approval. The mayor approves that. Governor Baker approved the lease by which my client is going to develop this project in air rights over the Mass Pike. And then, we submit our building permit plans to the BPDA, and they review them. And then the BPDA certifies to ISD that our building permit plans correspond exactly to the planned development area that's been legislatively enacted by the BZC. It's the BPDA that does that. And that happened here, Madam Chair, and that is in the affidavits. We've submitted a memorandum of law, which hopefully you saw, that was last week. We also submitted affidavits from BPDA Director Brian Golden, from Askling Kerr, who was the project manager here, who testify exactly to the BPDA process in terms of what they did on the building permit. And it's just as I said, they review the building permit plans to make sure that they conform with the legislatively approved PDA plan. And that was a building height for the, for the office portion of 298 feet, and a building height for the hotel portion of 158.4. And in fact, when properly measured, the building of, the office building is a little less than that, I think it's around 297, and the hotel is a little. That gets measured. We haven't.
I will hold right there, because that is the purview of ISD, and that's what I would like to hear from them, as the technical people who issue the permit.
Well, let me just say, it really is, in an Article 80, just to be clear, it's the purview of the BPDA. The BP, the building permit plans get given to the BPDA. They review them, and then they issue, the director of the BPDA issues a certificate of consistency and compliance to ISD, certifying, certifying that the plans, the building permit plans comply with the PDA that the BZC has enacted. And ISD, honestly, Madam Chair, takes, I mean, they can do their own check, but that consistency of compliance, that certificate of consistency and compliance, under Article 80, is what authorizes ISD to issue the building permit. That is the check. Now, how does that get, we have an architect who explains that, Kevin Lennon, his affidavit is before you. And he explains that the building permit, excuse me, the BPDA development plan sets the height of the, of the office building at 298. That gets measured, starting 30 feet point four above, above the. That gets measured starting thirty-feet-point-floor above, above the, the, you know, as the, as the base elevation. And then it goes up from there, and you don't count the mechanicals and the penthouse and things like that. You just go up to the top of the last occupiable floor, in this case, to the top of floor twenty. And that measurement on the building permit plans, and I will, I will refer you to Plan Set One, Building Permit A-two-two-zero-zero, which is the building permit plan for the office building, that, that one shows, it's at two-hundred-and-ninety-seven feet. It's.
Okay, okay. Counselor, can you, can you hold on? I, I have that information, I have, I have, okay. So now let me hear from ISD. Whoever's going to be speaking, put your name and address on the record. And please, tell us, tell us about the issuance of this permit.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Kevin McConner, I just wanted to also make you aware that Asling Kerr from the BPDA is on the call as well, if you desire to hear from her after Lisa.
Thank you, thank you. Lisa or Chris, Lisa, Lisa's, Lisa Huang or Chris English, who is going to speak?
Lisa.
Okay, please, please put your name and address on the record.
My name is, sorry, can you say that one more time?
Please put your name and address on the record. And please tell us about why this project was issued as a right.
This, my name is Lisa Huang. This is, this is regards to one-oh-one Boylston Street. This project was issued as a right due to, we had received the letter, the certificate of consistency letter from the, from, from the applicant and agree with and, and issue the permit as a right.
Okay, and I think the question that becomes, was it issued for three-fifty-three feet, I guess, three-twenty-two-point-six feet? You know, or was it issued three-twenty-two-point-six feet for the office and one-seventy-seven-point-six feet for the hotel? Or was it issued for what it was supposed to be issued for, at two-ninety-eight and one-fifty-eight?
Two-ninety-eight and one-fifty-eight.
You're maintaining that's what it was issued as, okay? Okay, 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 thank you. Okay, so now, our next step, if, if anybody, if any, any of the parties want to put anything else in the record, please do so by Friday. In the meantime, we're going to refer this to the city's law department to help us with this and to answer basically three questions. One is to define our jurisdiction in this review. Second, clarify slash substantiate the tracking of the argument made by Mr. Timman on both the height of the office and the hotel. And number three, to look at that building height as, as represented by Mr. Timman and determine how much of that overage, if there is any overage, has gone into amenity space versus support space for the building. So may I have a motion requesting that of, of the law department?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So I thank everybody here who's representing each, each of the, the applicants. Thank you to the ownership and to ISD for the presence and to BPDA. We will get back to you when we have a response from the law department. The meeting is now, the meeting is now adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.